19th, it is 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council, Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon our Senior Pastor Drew Travis with the First Presbyterian Church of Granbury to do our invocation along with livening this up here. And followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Fledge led by our own Eddie Rodriguez. All rise.
Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory, you are the Creator of all. It is you who breathes life into all that lives, and you that implants in each of us the yearnings of our lives. We are in your presence as we inhabit your earth. We dwell in your midst as we live in our communities. We share your light as we share our lives with family and friends. Remind us that all we do, we do in your world. May we be good stewards of what you have entrusted to our care and good stewards of those others you have placed in our lives. In this season of hope and light, when so many of us prepare for your presence to come, instill in us compassionate and empathetic hearts. Help us light the way that the darkness of want and need may be exposed and we may care for all our citizens. May we be reminded of your great love in this holy time, that we may share that love and its abundance. Grant your presence this night on these who gather to meet, to discuss, to decide, to lead our community. Share with them your wisdom and courage. Guide them by the calling of your Spirit, that as they govern, all may be served. Be present, we pray, and bless these proceedings, even as you bless our community and bless our nation. Be known to us as we prayed, your God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance is to be Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
We've got a pretty lengthy agenda. Thank you, Drew. First item on here is our citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. These are speakers that have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes, and allotted at this time for the comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. The City Council will be allowed to receive the input of the information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into discussion. At this time, I don't think anybody has signed up, right, Carla? Okay. Well, then we'll move on down to the public comments on the agenda items, and these are for the non-public hearing agenda items. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comment regarding agenda items that are not listed as public hearing. The public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. So at this time, if anybody in the public wishes to come up and speak on any item, hearing none, we'll move on. At this time, we'll go into the consent agenda. The consent agenda, we have the first item being considered approving the City Council meeting minutes of November 18, 2019, Special Meeting, and November 19, 2019, Regular Meeting. Second item, considered approving Resolution Number 1928, exercising the two-year renewal option for the municipal depository service contract with First National Bank, which expires January 31st. Number three is to consider approving the purchase of equipment to unfit, upfit, I'm sorry, the four 2020 Chevrolet Tahos, the police pursuit vehicles from the Stoltz Telecom in the amount of $99,093. Counsel, this item here, we're actually putting this on here because it probably should have been voted on along with the Tahos at the prior meeting, so we're just covering the fact that we're putting the equipment on the Tahos that was approved at that meeting. And number four is to consider renewing water treatment chemical contract, number 1718-07, with Eagle Labs, Inc., renting Southwoods, Inc. This is just a renewal contract that we do every year. Number five is to consider adopting ordinance numbers 1980, amending Chapter 10, Section 5.6, assurance of building permit for the Granbury City Code. So, Counsel, you've had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda. At this time, are there any items on there that you wish to make changes to, or are there any items on there that you wish to remove from the consent agenda at this time?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Two and three.
Pardon?
Agenda item number two and agenda item number three.
You wish to remove them?
Nope. To deliberate.
Deliberate. Okay.
Remove them, remove them from the consent.
You want to remove them from consent and move them down to the deliberation agenda? Okay.
That's correct.
Item number two and item number three, wish to move and deliberate on? Any other items, Counsel? At this time, if hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agendas less item number two and item number three.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda, as said, is approved. We'll next move into the deliberation agenda. We'll go ahead and go into the consent agenda items that were removed, that being number two first. Consider approving Resolution Number 1928, exercising the two-year renewal option for the municipal depository service contract with First National Bank. And I'm gonna call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please, Chris.
You bet. So the contract that we're in with First National Bank is a three-year contract with the option to renew it for two years. And whenever we competitively awarded that project three years ago, they were the only ones that basically did everything at no charge. And they were the best price for us, and they are also the most convenient for our staff to walk across the street, make a deposit. Ava, would you like to address some of that issue as well?
Good evening, Counsel, City Manager. Just exactly what Chris said, we have released a proposal for depository services back in 2017, 2016, actually. And we have evaluated five different proposals at that point. And First National Bank was by far the one that was able to provide us the services that we needed, as well as zero charge for the services that we are using as depository services compared to the other banks. And there were several of them. At that point, I had a presentation where I compared the different services each bank offered and the costs associated with that. And First National Bank was by far the one that provided the best services to our city. The fact that they have charged no cost, or there are no costs associated with any of the services, like the collateral that they provide, or any of the banking services that we are using, for, we have over 20 accounts with First National Bank, because we have to have separate accounts for that service as well. And we make deposits each day. We scan about 200, 300 checks a day. And there are just no fees associated with that. So that's the reason staff have evaluated the services that we are currently getting, along with the potentials on earnings that are paying us at this point on our deposits the same rate as the three-month Treasury. So it's very competitive. Again, that was higher than anybody else was able to offer us. We would recommend that we stay with this bank for another two years, and then release another proposal at that point.
Thank you, Ava. Chris. Counsel, any more questions on this item?
Mayor, the only thing I have is a correction on the staff recommendation paragraph. The staff recommends exercising the two-year renewal option for depository services contract with First National Bank and not First Financial Bank, please.
It's First National.
That's correct. Not First Financial Bank.
Yeah.
So on the...
That's true.
So can we make that correction?
Sure.
Just don't go with staff recommendation there.
No, no. It's, yeah, I just want that.
So does the actual resolution have that mistake on it?
Yeah. Well, when you look at the actual, the staff agenda report, click on the agenda item number two.
I'm looking at the resolution.
Question was, was a proposal. It's proposed First National.
But we're just asking you to approve the resolution.
Okay. Do you see that?
Yes.
Yeah, so the resolution is correct. The literature is not.
Staff report is incorrect.
Staff report is incorrect. So we'll make that correction, make note of that correction of the staff report, but the resolution is correct.
The acronym is correct, but the name of it, isn't that crazy?
There is a First Financial. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing that, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said Resolution Number 1928 as reported.
So moved.
I've got that motion by Councilman Rodriguez, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move to number three, which was pulled off the consent agenda. Number three reads, "Consider approving the purchase of equipment to outfit, or upfit, for 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles from the Stoltz Telecom in the amount of $99,093." Now, the red part of it is that we've added that to it, right?
Yes, the further than...
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and have Chris give us a report on that one, if you would, please.
Sure, I'll get Ava to come, or Mitch, this is their equipment for the police department.
Which one do you want?
Both of you, I need it. Mitch and your other sister Mitch.
Okay, this agenda item is for upfitting, completely upfitting two brand-new additional Tahos, and for equipment replacement in two Tahos that are replacing outgoing fleet vehicles. Any other question?
Counsel, any questions or concerns on this item and how it came about, be up here?
Yes, my assumption, sorry Mitch for wasting your time, but my assumption was it was for new Chevy Tahos, and my question was, and you answered it, why only two of the vehicles were getting less lethal shotguns, and two of them were only getting flex shields? But you answered it, because only two are being outfitted, is that correct?
Only two are being completely outfitted. The other two are replacing vehicles coming offline. So some of that equipment of the two vehicles coming offline is able to be transferred over to two of the new ones. And the vehicle, and the equipment that can't go into the new ones, and it's usually because of fit, that equipment's being replaced. So that's why the two new, it shows the flex shield and the others in the two, and not in the ones being transferred, because that equipment's being transferred already.
Gotcha, okay. Now, is the same equipment in the city police vehicles the same as the county police vehicles?
Negative, no.
What's the difference?
There's a lot of difference.
Okay.
You want specifics? I mean, there's a lot of stuff we carry in our vehicles, they don't. They don't have flex shields, we do. We carry AEDs in our vehicles, they don't. We have non-lethal shotguns, they don't. So there's a lot of stuff that goes into our cars that I'm sure don't go into counties. I don't know exactly what goes in the county vehicles. All I can tell you is what goes in ours.
Okay. What I was getting at, and what I was trying to allude to, is that if we can make a, maybe join some type of, maybe you've already done it, collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, where we can use one specific vendor to reduce our cost in certain items that we use.
They use, they use their own vendors that they've used forever for certain things that they do, that we don't use those vendors, we use others. I don't know whether or not that can be done or not. That's always been a, not just in equipment, but in other things that have tried to be done in the past, and it just didn't work, so.
So let me address that a little bit. We use, just like the vehicles, we're using the buy board to buy those. Those are on a statewide bid process, and so we're able to get that statewide collaborative purchasing for the state of Texas for law enforcement for that. And we do this equipment in the same way, through the DIR and other cooperative buying programs.
Okay.
So there is a bid process that's gone through to get us to this point. And we're members of those organizations. And so whenever we, like when we buy those cars, there's like a $400 charge to that buy board organization for the work that they did to do the bidding on that vehicle. So we get a really great price in that way.
Okay.
And so with the other equipment, like the notebooks that go in those cars, you know, they're coming through CDW, which is through the DIR, which is a governmental purchasing conglomerate that the state puts out for bid on behalf of all of us and lets us participate in that. So the county can do the same thing, I just don't know if they're doing it. And that's the way we do most of our technology, is through the DIR or one of those organizations like that.
Yep.
So the, what I wanted to do was be as transparent as possible by putting this, what's red ink on your agenda that's printed is the amended version of the agenda, because once I saw that we still had $61,000 worth of more equipment to buy for those four different vehicles, I thought we just need to get that all together and at least have it out there where you can see it and understand what's happening comprehensively, and not come back with another agenda item and do it all over again with $61,000, so.
And there was some confusion, I think, between a conversation I had with Kristi on this. I thought it was gonna be two separate agenda items at the beginning. It always has been in the past, the vehicles have been one and the equipment have been another. And she understood it, that the equipment didn't need to be, because no piece of equipment was over that certain amount of money. But as it turns out, because it was all being purchased from one end vendor, then it needed to be into another one.
Good.
Counsel, any more questions, concerns on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the said purchase as requested. I have that motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second for Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Mitch. Our next deliberation item is item number six. Actually, what I'd like to do here, Counsel, we've got six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 here are actually items that we're going to be reviewing. And we're gonna take each one of these individually, and what I'd like to do is call upon our City Manager here to go through each one of these and bring a presentation to you and look at these. Now, these items here are things that actually have been talked about, but we want to take and talk about them again, and bring some of our newest council members up to date, and bring up the council with some of the other things that have changed possibly on some of these items. These are items that have been on our strategic plan and are out there for us to look at and possibly go down, going down the line, have a financial report. But tonight, what I'd like to do is go ahead and look at each one of these items here and have a staff report on where we're at on each one of these items. So we'll get started with the first item being number six, consideration and action on the property at 116 Houston Street, which is the Opera House dorms over there. So, Chris, can you give us a staff report on that one, please?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to Michael. He's been working really close with PGAL on all this, and we'll just try to make it as brief, but as educational as possible. Feel free to ask any questions. We really welcome this time to have a dialogue with you and give you complete understanding of what's going on. So, Michael, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Gerber.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, Mayor, Counsel. These items are a result of strategic planning exercises with City Council, and these were goals established and discussed, and items that Chris has had us working on ever since you said that they were important to you. The first one, and one of, and the, I guess, really the two out of, two out of three of these first ones are related to our town square. And along with the lake, as you all know, those are our two gems, what makes Granbury unique. And so we wanted to make sure that they had proper evaluation, as you requested. The town square's 150 years old, roughly, we think. And so we know that that, protecting that is important to City Council, and looking at ways to bring the lake into play at the conference center was another important goal of City Council's that we wanted to look at. And we have Jeff Gerber here with PGAL to talk about the first three, but I'll give you a little background on each one to start with, and then you can ask me any questions, and I'll introduce Jeff. On the, the first item is the Opera House dorms. As you may recall, we brought this to you in February of 2018 for discussion shortly after the December closing of the dorms. And you, we, we had some conceptual renovation drawings at the time. One was a renovation option, and another was a replacement option. And then we subsequently brought back some parking lot designs as well for Counsel to consider. And we put all those in front of you again tonight. Jeff will go over them in more detail with you. Some cost estimates are included, along with the parking lots and the renovation options. I believe there was some talk back then that there might be some private fundraising efforts going on. Don't know if that's, if that's had any movement, you may know more than us, but we wanted to bring it back for discussion, go over the options one more time with you, and see, get some direction from you going forward. And here's Jeff Gerber with PGAL.
Thanks, Michael. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm gonna walk through the presentation that's on the screen. Basically, to give you a little bit of history, I was first introduced to the building on a site visit back in 2018, right after the building had been inspected by the city inspectors and had established a red tag on the building. So I was asked to come in and to look at the building, to try to understand what the requirements would be to get the building back in a habitable condition, and to help identify what the cost of that might be, and then to look at some other strategies for that. So just a high-level information, so the building was essentially, we believe, was built back in the 40s or 50s era, when asbestos was a very common building material. That building has asbestos throughout, and much of the asbestos was in a friable condition, which meant it was exposing the people that were in the building to the asbestos products. There are several life safety issues with the building that didn't meet the building code, may have met building code at the time it was constructed, but certainly doesn't meet it today. And when it was being used as a residential facility, it has a whole different set of criteria that is required for residential facilities, where people stay that way, which the building did not meet those requirements as well. Certainly, the building didn't meet the accessibility requirements or the Federal Housing Act, which is a requirement of any residential facility. And then the building's skin was very problematic, related to not only water infiltration, but it didn't meet the energy code. So any renovation that would happen would have to bring the entire building up to meet the state new energy code. The building hadn't been renovated in a long time, so finishes were a problem, mechanical systems were either not functional, and there were several issues about the range hood that wasn't one, things like that. So we did an analysis, trying to figure out what we would have to do to make the building habitable. And what we had determined was that the foundation and slab were in pretty good condition, but the roof structure was rotting pretty severely. The building wasn't insulated, single-pane glass. So all of those things had to be updated in order for it to be habitable in a renovation strategy. We, I had done a budget estimate for that and determined that it would, to recreate the like use, was about $3.8 million in 2018 dollars. And then I was asked to, if we just took the building down and then built back a new structure that was compliant, what would that cost, to build the same size? And my budget for that was $3.4 million, essentially. And here's the detail of that information, to show you how I got to that, those figures. So one of the subsequent meetings after that, I was asked to look at various, if the City Council decided they didn't want the building to remain in place, could it be used for a parking lot with the shortage of parking that you have around the downtown area? So I looked at that, I looked at a couple different strategies for creating a surface parking lot. One was an angled parking that created about 30 surface parking spaces. And my budget for that was about $375,000, again in 2018 dollars. And then the second was trying to maximize the parking spaces, which created a few extra spaces, but also created some not-normal spacing of drive aisles, which isn't always ideal, but that you could get a few extra parking spaces in there, and that would be a budget, project budget of $412,000.
Hey, can you go back to that, can you go back to that slide again?
Yes, sir.
Because, okay, because I was just looking to see what you had on the demo part of it. Okay.
$40,000.
Yes, here, go ahead.
Okay. And then I looked at, could you build a parking structure to try to get a little bit more parking? And the issue with the size of the site is it's not really ideal for a economical parking structure, that gave, an economical parking structures where you can have a floor slope that meets, that you can park on, and have enough distance to be able to accomplish that. The site wasn't big enough to do that, or it wasn't wide enough to do a traditional double-bay parking garage. So it required what we call a speed ramp, which meant a portion of the site that you see on the left is only a ramp system. So to get a two-level garage would only get you 64 parking spaces, and I had run a budget for that of about $1,009,000 for those parking spaces. So with that, any questions on the information?
Thank you. Counsel, any more, any questions for these folks? Michael or Chris?
We'd kind of like to get some general direction from the Counsel, put together a finance package to bring back to you at the next meeting or another meeting, so.
I was gonna, I'm gonna lead up to that, as far as maybe combining all of these and getting some kind of a financial package on every one of these after we, after we review them and get some of the Counsel up to speed on them, and look at some of those. I mean, and that's, if that's what Counsel wants to do, if they want to get a financial, look at maybe just two or three of them and leave one out, I don't know how they want to do it. What I'd like to do, first of all, just go through each one of these and have Counsel, you know, understanding them a little more thoroughly, yeah. So Counsel, you got any more questions on this particular item right now? Hearing none, we'll go to the next one then. Chris, with the number seven, reviewing the preliminary design cost for the proposed police facility, provide some direction there.
Bet. Go ahead, guys.
This one's also Jeff, and this is, Jeff's done the conceptual work, the preliminary architectural work associated with our police facility. As, as y'all may know, our current police facility is located here in City Hall, and they've outgrown the space that they, that they currently utilize, and they are in need of a more modern and functional facility to serve their needs. And what's being proposed is roughly $29,000, well, almost 30,000 square feet, that would be built on a city-owned track at, as part of our 44-acre tract out on Loop 567. The, the work that, this has been brought to you once before as well, a few months back, just to kind of get your feelings on the concepts, and to look at the elevations. And so what we have in front of you tonight is the selected elevation to take a look at how the colors and such would work, as well as the costs. And the next step, if Counsel chooses to move forward, would be to hire PGAL to do the detailed design work associated with the police station. And that's what would be considered in the next, in the package, the financial package that we would go forward on. And with that, I'll let Jeff go over to... And with that, I'll let Jeff go over the, the details one more time. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Michael. So I think there's another presentation. These are similar slides to what you had presented before, you had seen before, just condensed down. As Michael said, we met with the city police department. We reviewed their existing facility. We did a detailed program for the types of services that your police department performs, looked at the types of spaces that you don't have in your current facility that are commonplace in police departments in Texas, certainly of cities of your size. And we developed a program size for that. And that's where the 29,000, 1,000 square foot facility came from. And we, in order to validate that program, we did a concept design, worked with your police department and city staff to do some configurations to try to create an efficient building that not only used the space well, but also minimized the amount of staff members that would be required to operate the building. And so what I'm going to show you today is the results of that planning effort. Again, this is similar to what you've seen before. As Michael said, the site is located off of Loop 567. We located it up in the, in the corner there with some minimal public parking in the front and then would be some secured staff and vehicle parking in behind the building, which would also have a small vehicle impound area. This is a large portion of that, so you see the building there in the center with the public parking directly in front of it. This is a copy of the floor plan that we developed, again with your team. These are, it's a very efficient building, very little wasted space. Every square inch of this building is, is highly programmed. It does accommodate not only your need of your department today, but we projected it out to be a 20-year requirement building for your community. And so I won't go through the details of that unless you have some questions. But you can see this, we did this not only drawing the floor plan, but also locating equipment that you either have or need in those spaces so to make sure that each of the spaces are not any bigger than they have to be to accommodate efficiently the equipment and people that need to accommodate and work in those spaces. We'd also developed, I think, seven different elevation options that we had showed you before, and this is the one that was sort of gravitated to. It's a pretty simple, straightforward building, rectangular type shape. We wanted to try to create architecture that was complementary to some of the architecture that exists here in Granbury, using similar imagery and similar color and, and similar materials. So this has a stone front that would be similar to the stone that is here on City Hall with the, with the pitched roof. You see the entry there, the two upper shots are of the front, and then the, the back of the building is on the, on the lower rendering there. And with that, we also looked at what an appropriate budget would be for this project and things that were considered in that budget was that police departments are complicated buildings. They're not just simple buildings. They have unique requirements, not only to achieve the function, but also to protect the inhabitants and the people that use that building. Typically, police departments have some versions of hardening to allow the building to not only withstand some storm events, but also police departments are becoming more and more targets of, of people trying to make a point. And so we, we design a lot of police departments throughout Texas. I think we've probably done 25 or 30 of them in the last 10 years. And most of those buildings have some level of hardening, and we assume that in this budget, not overly done, but enough to provide some kind of middle of the road protection that we typically do in police departments. And so this budget is based on that. The total project cost is just under $13 million. That includes the cost of construction, the site development for the parking lot. It also includes the soft costs that are associated with doing the design and the materials testing and geotechnical survey, those types of things. It also has a allocation for furniture and equipment, as well as contingency that only is there if, if it's necessary. So all of that is included in that proposed project budget of $12,985,000. Any questions with this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, record.
Really quickly, I, we, I think, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we moved into this, the City Hall building about 15 years ago. And this might be a better question for Chief Yelvan.
2002.
2002?
Yep.
Okay. And we're bursting at the seams, and I don't even know if this is feasible, but are we even looking far enough ahead? I'm looking, I'm reading this and it's a 20-year projection. And if we're bursting at the seams right now, I'm not advocating for spending more money right now, but maybe looking at it and making sure that we're not going to be doing the same thing in 20 years, looking to either build a new building or add on, or do we have the capacity in this design to add on to this particular building?
That was one of the factors in the site plan configuration you see there on the top part of the page was to allow the building to push out in that direction. Obviously, with some other considerations, it could move in other sides as well. But we factored that in, in how the building was, was laid out, shown here.
Mayor?
I'm Rodriguez.
Do we have the, do we know the current square footage of the police department now?
6,000, 7,000, he says. I don't know that they're that big.
That's not, that's not including the training facility though, right? That we utilize over there for the old?
The gym.
Gym. That's the, that's the old.
Feet store, we use part of it for exercise facility.
Feet store, where is that?
Uh, over by the memorial park.
Oh, that is. That old feet store?
No, no, it was the.
It was a bond feet store.
It was the veteran museum, it was a veteran museum over there, Eddie.
Oh, we use that as a gym?
Yep.
Part of it.
Okay. Do we know how many personnel are present in the police department?
Mitch, all in, you got 49 employees?
All in, I don't know how, we have 41, 47.
47 employees. And so they're, and they're sardines. So as soon as they moved into that building, they had to cannibalize the conference room to make it the chief's office. And, and the training room is no longer a training room. It is where the reports are written for the police department, for the officers to do their computer work.
And the gym square footage, do we know the gym square footage?
No. That's just a, a side benefit that we received because the museum moved.
Can, can you go to the next slide, please?
Yes, sir.
That conference, men, the bottom left, training room?
Yes, sir.
What's the housing capability of that training room?
Give me one second.
Full capacity.
It's 100.
100 shares.
And that, it's important for me to tell you that that.
There's 100 seats shown in that diagram.
That that area that's drawn on there can be also be multi-use. It's, it's segregated from the rest of the building with security control to where if we needed to have some type of, another training event there besides for police, we could do that as well. But with this size room, we could also host other police departments to come and do training and use that space and not have to send our guys elsewhere to receive that training. So there's some benefits to hosting events here and, and create tourism that way as well.
Didn't we talk earlier about, or when we talked about this before, didn't we talk about doing this, that there was possibilities that we could do some of this in phases? Well, I mean, we can build the whole building, but there were some that we would leave unfinished at times.
Yeah, so certainly you could leave a portion of the building unfinished. The, the neat thing is about police buildings is that the growth in how the police departments grow is, is, is different than a lot of other kinds of buildings. And so they grow, and so as the city grows and department grows, you had more people, locker rooms grow a little bit, you know, the training requirements grow a little bit, the, you had so many patrol officers, you had another sergeant. So it grows really incrementally. And so it's not like you can add a section onto a building when you need another 5,000 square feet, because that square footage is required all over that building. And so the way it's, would generally be done is, is you could leave portions of this un-built out that you don't need today and defer the cost of that build out until you needed it.
And I think it's kind of what Councilman Reiner was indicating, this, it's going to be a building that's going to be there for 40 years or more, whatever. So there's obviously some area there that we probably don't, won't be utilizing when we first get into it, but probably will grow into it, you might say. And there's plenty of land there, I guess, for other constructions, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
So you made a comment about cities of our size, and this is just basically the, the basic size of the police department for cities our size. You know, we're only 10,000 people, right?
Correct.
And so, so the average city with 10,000 people has something this size?
Well, it, it, it depends, and Mitch is probably a better one to answer this than me, but police departments generally, the services they're required are unique and by, based on the expectations of those, of that community and about what the makeup of that community is. Communities that tend to have more retail type uses tend to have more officers to support that than if it's a residential, per se, type city. But generally speaking, that we, like I said, we're, we probably do more police departments in Texas than any firm out there, and we do them all over Texas. I've done several for communities of your size. And this is pretty close to what the requirements are that we find in a lot of those other cities as well. They might have more officers or have a different training requirements, but they are, this is a comparable square footage, yes.
So it's like community served instead of just the city?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And, and I like the fact, and then we talked about this at the previous meeting, it's set up for expansion. We've got the community room and, and the locker, locker room space, and that's, that's a definite need here. All right, so, I mean, I like the design.
Yeah, there's lots of things in this that you don't have, that you really need, that you should have, that are in this design.
Well, I think, I understand what we're going to be, what we're going to be, the pushback we're going to get is the same thing that the school district gets, and that is, you know, hey, if they didn't have that when I went to school, why do they need it now? And I think that's where we're going to, that's the question that we're going to be answering, is why do we need it? And I think we need to, we need to have a good program on, on how to educate people, and this is, this is the world we live in right now. We're used to, you could, you would have a metal, I mean, a lot of these small towns, their police department is a metal building beside the state highway that goes right through town, and that's it. There is no security, but that's not the world we live in. And I think it's going to be important to kind of educate the community through social media and, and the newspaper as to this is why we need this. Because $13 million, I mean, looking at, looking at your numbers, we've got in our packet a January 15th quote of 12,900.
12 million.
12,901,000. And the one you have up here is $95,000, and that's in, that's a six month period. So I don't think, it's going to be like the airport. It's not going to get cheaper to do, is it?
They generally do not.
Yeah. Thank you.
And bear in mind, counsel, that there's still that, that 1.2 that we paid for the land on there, so that's not included in that 12.
Mayor?
Councilman Rodriguez.
Um.
It's paid for, yeah.
What was the, what was the population size? Chris?
Granbury, right now, they've, they've estimated it 10,413.
Didn't we exceed the, the 2023 census and that, or?
That is, he's projecting that.
That's a projection of, of right now, the 2019 projection.
The 2019?
We're at 79, 79 right now.
2010, on the, on the city limits sign, it says 79, 35 or 85.
79, 78.
And, and we're, you know, the council government has us at 10,413.
Let me, let me ask you a question. You think this size of department, if we increased our population size, let's just say by 2,000 more people, so 12, 12,000 people, is that sufficient? Chief?
Chief's probably a better one to answer that.
I would, I would tell you that, that we're predicting a two and a half percent population growth for the next 20 years, which will be substantially more than where we're at now. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, two and a half percent per year is what our comp plan says.
So that's a.
My, my experience is that police department requirements and population don't have a direct necessarily relationship.
Right.
What, one of the factors that is really a pressure on police departments today that what didn't exist five years ago and certainly didn't exist 10 years ago is the training requirements that are now not only mandated, but are really necessitated for being able to make sure the officers have the proper training about how to interface with the public and all of the scrutiny that occurs in that realm. And having the, the spaces and the, all the equipment that you just approved or in the previous training about how to use that equipment that didn't exist five years ago. So it's a completely different world that they're policing in today than what it even was five years ago. You know, this community is now creating whole departments for social media monitoring as part of the, that didn't exist five years ago. The, the world of policing has become very complex, and as our world becomes more complex, they're becoming, they have to react to that. Mayor?
Hey, hey Mitch?
Do you have any questions to leave?
I, I do. Do you have a projected number of people or employees you plan on hiring within, is there a five year projection? Tell me about that.
We, we submitted a five year plan a couple of years back, and it put us at 58 after the end of those five years.
58?
Yes, sir.
That was from last year, so that's four more years from now.
Right.
You think that, that.
One thing I wanted to make clear is we can't pay attention to what the city limit sign says the population is, because there's 18 residential subdivisions within the boundaries of the city limits that are not in the city.
Right.
And we deal with those people. So actually, we're a city of about 40,000, and that's what we have to think like. If we're, we're a city of 40,000.
We've, we've got 49,000 cars a day driving in front of classic Chevrolet every day. That's what the traffic count shows.
And that's what, in Jeff's statement, you know, you build a police department not based off of that, but based off of proximity. I mean, if you, if we, if we were living in a community that was surrounded by a metroplex like a Fort Worth or something, it'd be a different, it would be a different thing that we'd have to do versus living out here in, in Hood County, out here in the city, city of Granbury, out here not surrounded by the, by the metroplex and all that. So it makes a difference, but we still have to take in consideration, like Mitch said, what the traffic count is, what we actually do, what our police officers do, and we've got all that information to put into this, because we know what we're doing right now. We know what the growth is going to be and, and what type of growth it's going to be, so.
Exactly.
My, here's, here's where I'm going and what I'm thinking, is that, you know, we have so much new development. We got the development off the loop, you know, that's, I don't know, I forgot how many units that one is. You got that proposed development just on White Cliff, that's 147 units. You know, if each person had a car, think about how many cars that is. You got behind Nissan dealership, you got that whole development coming in. So that's a lot of cars. That's a lot of people coming in.
Yes, sir.
So am I undercutting by, just by 2,000? I, I think so. I think within the next five years, I think we'll be up more than 10,000 people in the city.
I agree, I agree with you 100%.
We're there now.
So I'm, I'm, I understand the need for, for a new department. I just think you're going to exceed the 58 people that you're going to need.
Well, that, that was our five year plan. The building, in the building, when we sat down with Jeff and talked about this building, we, we looked at what. we, we looked at what we were going to be out, all the way out towards, this print is way too small. 2038, is that what that says?
You've got to make it bigger so you can read it.
Yeah, 28, it's going to be, we projected 75, and at 2038, we projected 90. So we, we, when we sat down with Jeff and looked at this building, we, we projected those numbers in throughout the use of this building. So that's why the locker room has as many lockers as it has, is for that, that expanded growth. That's why there's a dispatch center built into it. We don't have a dispatch center right now, but one's built in it because we're eventually going to have to do that. So there's a, there's a dispatch center.
So you're going to move away from the county?
Eventually, we're going to have to.
Have to.
Is that going to be an EOC, emergency operations center? Where that 100-plus person going to be?
No, sir. It's, it's not being built for that, for that purpose.
So you think you can house about 100 officers in this current floor, floor plan, if possible?
Again, for, as a police department, which is unique, most of the officers and the staff are people out in the field. They only come to this building in the morning to get briefed, and then they're gone. So the impact of adding an officer might be a locker, as opposed to in an office building, you've got a person, you're adding 100 square foot office for them, right? So police departments aren't that way. And it's when you hire someone that houses in the department itself, then you need to have an office-type space for them. But if you hire 10, 10 officers, you might just hire one sergeant that needs an office.
Right. And we expect each, each section that has to do with CID, with patrol, with admin is designed for that purpose, for that growth to occur in this, in what we call the briefing room. It's right now set up to hold 20 people a shift, but we don't have 20 people on a shift. But that room will be able to hold 20 officers for deep, for briefing situations in that room. So we, we, we built this to be as small as we possibly could, that's going to be able to handle us 20 years out the line.
You don't have a vehicle processing center here, do you?
Yes, sir. The pink, the pink section is our evidence processing room.
Not now. But now?
We have no, our processing area is.
Outside in the parking lot?
It, yes.
On the go.
All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Counsel, any more questions for Mitch or the team? Thank you. Thank you. Well, no further questions on that item. We'll move down to the next item, which is reviewing the concept and the cost estimates for the City of Granberry Conference Center deck expansion and boat docks in Providence.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Again, as council, as city council, as part of city council's strategic planning exercise, there was a goal to host more outdoor events at the conference center and increase the ability and capacity of boats to dock adjacent buildings like the Hilton next door as well. The goal of expanding the deck area and providing for boat docks behind the city's conference center and the Hilton Hotel was deemed a priority. And with this direction, we began looking for concepts to achieve the goal. There's some details in your packet that gives you some spacing and measurements and such, but I'll let Jeff go over the actual concepts with you and the costs associated with those. Thank you.
Thank you again. So as Michael said, we looked at different sizes of capacities that could fit on the site, and we worked up a number of different ones, some that just focused around the conference center, some that went and connected the conference center over to the hotel, and then some that went from the conference center all the way down to the end of the, of the hotel as well. And obviously, these are the existing conditions that are out there, pretty limited spaces to have larger events there as your boat dock condition. So this exhibit is the largest of the options that we had considered, and you can see this one runs the full width from the conference center on the left side all the way to the hotel on the other side. And the sections of the fixed dock, which are located up against the existing area, would be at that same elevation. Potentially, it could be a different elevation, but we assumed it's close to that elevation, that it is 30 feet, 30-foot deep, adding on to the 10 or 11-foot depth that you have there now. And then it goes out to approximately 60 feet in the center where you see the, the three large gray structures. Those are just some shade structures that we assumed would probably be of benefit out there. And then below that is a ramping system to go down to the boat slips, and this has about 25 slips that are accessed by two different ramps. There's about 7,500 square feet in the slips area. The decked area that we're showing here is about 24,300 square feet. And again, that was just a shape that we drew. It could be whatever size that you want, wanted. We were just trying to give you some idea about a deck that could accommodate different kinds of events, if you wanted to have a band out there or multiple kind of events or have, you know, whatever types of events you want. We assumed that the fixed section would be strong enough to be able to accommodate high density of people so that it's able to accommodate, if you had a wedding reception and dance out there, they'd be able to accommodate the, the weight and the movement of that. And then obviously, with the number of slips that we're showing there as well, those slips are 25-foot long, and so they're all about, you know, length of the ones that you have out there now. And so again, I ran a budget for this. This one has a little more complexity to the budget because I don't build boat slips every day. And so I went out to manufacturers of different systems, showed them this to get an idea about what the cost is for these types of structures. And so my budget for this is really built on that information. And so this has a total project budget, again, of just under $3 million. And the numbers I'm using for the, for the floating slips and all that is the numbers I got directly from manufacturers and said this is an idea about what that size of a, of a structure would be. So obviously, if you wanted it to be bigger, you could scale this up, or if you wanted it to be smaller, you could scale it down as well. So this was the one that I was asked to put a budget on, just to give you an idea about what a dock expansion of this size would be. So I'm happy to answer questions.
Here, here again, that's an item that can be done in sections, I would assume?
Abs, this one absolutely could get built in pieces as you needed it, for sure.
Chris, can I, can we get Tammy to just, I'd like to ask Tammy a question, you know? Can you get Tammy up there?
She's coming.
All right.
Hello, counsel. How are you? Mayor?
Tammy, how often?
I better put my glasses on so I can see.
Okay. How often do you, in your marketing, do you get people that ask about something, maybe that this would work out to where we could be utilizing this and using it for, you know, events that they were talked about?
Well, right now, we don't because we don't, we just, you know, don't have the capabilities of doing that. But I think if we were to build something like this, it would completely change our marketing structure. It would give us a whole new thing to sell here in Granberry. Sorry, my voice is cracking.
Have you been around areas like this that have utilized something similar to this, or?
Very much so. You're all aware of my experience in Midland for the last 14 years, and I think that's a perfect example of what you can do. We started that building with an arena, and by the time we were through, we had a convention center, an amphitheater, and a VIP section that we built in stages.
So it definitely would be something that we could market and probably bring a lot of people to utilize.
Yes, and, and one of the things that came out of our strategic planning was that we wanted to focus more on lake events, and so this would be a way to do that and change some of the business we've been targeting, which has been, you know, meetings, weddings, conventions. But if we had the capability to do events that were lake-specific, then we would start targeting what we were doing. And a good example would be our Lake Fest event, where we had a lot of success this past October. And we were very limited in the size. We have no way to expand. You know, parking would be an issue, so if we were going to start concentrating on lake events, then that would be the way to do it. We could do staging out behind the conference center. We also did the dive-in movie. We had that at one of our parks here in Granberry. That would have been something else. We could have had the projector and the movie there where we had boats coming up and watching the movie. So that was a great first-time event as well, so. And then we're doing the Goosebump Jump event, which is in January at the beach, and that event I would foresee turning into a weekend winter festival. So it just gives us a capability to mix our events with, with events along with things like conferences and association business that we're balancing out with weddings and private parties. So right now, we have a great mix of events, and this would just broaden that.
I guess I've got a question for Chris, too, along with that. Now, is there, can you treat this similar to like our parks and things like that, where if you have events, you have things that goes on, that money is earmarked, or it goes back into paying down on something like this?
Well, it would just go to the general fund, and, I mean, you could structure it any way you want, but typically, what you would do is, it's general fund revenue that goes in, and it helps pay for the maintenance and operation and debt service. So that's kind of where you're at.
But you couldn't, you couldn't just separate it?
Yeah, you could, but it's not going to be enough to, to take care of the conference center and everything.
Well, I understand that, right.
Just like we, you know, subsidized the activity of the conference center. And as we've stated in the past, it's very rare, in fact, I think we found one conference center in this entire state that's owned by a municipality that breaks even. So it is a lost leader, but it gets the tourism to your town, and it generates economic development activity that way. This would enhance that. I don't, I don't see a problem with that either. Like, the airport project is going to enhance airport aviation business, and this is going to stimulate our lake activity.
The number-one selling point we have is the fact that we're on the lake, and it would also create additional revenue streams that, you know, would bring money in. But Mr. Coffin's right. I mean, you know, it's a lost leader. It's to generate tourism to the community, but it would be a wonderful asset to us, and we're seeing a lot of success with associations coming to the conference center right now. And, you know, I just foresee that would be one of our best-selling tools to have that expansion. Right now, we have a beautiful area behind the conference center, but we're very limited on what we can do out there because of the width of that, that deck. I mean, I would foresee a lot of weddings as well.
Yeah, and looking at it, I mean, it's like, we already own the land. The land is probably worth several million dollars worth of waterfront property just to be able to build something on, so.
It would give us a great position when we're competing.
And the, the space for the hotels, I mean, a, a lake that you can park your boat in and stay at the, at the hotel is hard to find.
It's going to be overnight, yes.
I think you're going to bring in people from all over the area to stay in our, that is our hotel, it's our host hotel for the conference center, but, I mean, that's going to create more business for them when there's not a conference going on or whatever, so. It's a complimentary.
And depending upon how we utilize it as well, you know, the separation of events would be something we'd have to consider long-term, but being able to access that event separately as well is something we'd have to work on. But it does give us the opportunity to do something inside, something upstairs, and doing it multipurpose, and then also having an event outside as well, with separate access.
Okay. Counsel, any more questions for Stu Lee, or Michael, or Jeff, or Chris here?
I do.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Tammy, do you think the deck would benefit us going towards the hotel or going towards the other way?
That's a really good question. I was listening to what the architect was saying about the way we could change the, the dimensions as well. I would think the most important thing is going to be the largest space for staging and doing bands. And then from there, I mean, I'd have to look at the design, but I think from there, depending upon what the Hilton could provide in the way of food and beverage and restaurant service and that kind of stuff, we'd, you know, you'd have to study and determine that, but that's going to be a key component of the success of it as well. For them to be able to supply food and then for the conference center to be able to have bars and food and beverage out there could be a huge revenue generator as well. So, you know, you have to structure that. I loved the shade structures, but food and beverage is something to really consider, too. Of course, through the conference center, we can set up a lot of portables, a lot of portable bars, and we can move those anywhere. And that's going to be our largest revenue stream coming into the venue.
I mean, with the Lake Fest, that's what you did. I mean, your, your vendors were not in the hotel. Your vendors were out in the parking lot.
Correct.
So having your vendors on the left side of the convention center, looking at this picture.
And we have to be mindful, yes. We have to be very mindful, of course, with the, you know, the Hilton is licensed, right, to a certain point between us and the conference center, and so that would be, you know, I'm not sure how that works legally, but that would be their domain with their, their revenue as well. And then, so anything on the other side would be ours as far as the city. So it would just depend on what, what you want to do, but definitely an area big enough to do staging with large amounts of crowds.
It's all, it's all city property.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have that problem.
So we don't have the problem? Okay, so.
And plus, if the deck was more to the, I'm thinking if, you know, if it was to the left, you could set up more stuff on it with a better view.
Well, yes, and actually, that grassy area right there is, should be utilized in the future for a lot more stuff, like we did at Lake Fest. We had a sponsor there, and that's a great area that we can utilize.
You could, yeah, you could take it over there a little bit further and take it, take in that, that dock right there, yeah.
It would also give an area to access if you weren't coming through the conference center from that area.
Right.
Which could, could be a probability for multiple events at the same time.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
So this is more of an engineering question, and I know you said your specialty is not docks and slips and those type of things, but you've got wood dock? I mean, the, the rest of the boardwalk back there is not really wood, is it?
It's, it's colored brown. I wouldn't let the color dictate what it is necessarily.
No, what I'm saying is what's on the, what's on the budget.
Yes, so.
It's a wood dock.
So we look at the, using composite wood, not, not real wood, is what the, what the assumption was. And then we, when we went out to price the slips, essentially, we looked at steel versus with, with composite or all aluminum, and they were essentially coming back at the same price, so I didn't change it. But there's lots of options for what you ultimately want to do.
Okay, but composite's not going to just explode the glass?
No, these were based on composite costs.
Okay, thank you.
Tammy, where, I'm sorry.
Wait.
Tammy, where'd you all have that projector at? Where was it located at for that night at the, night on the?
Are you talking about the dive-in movie?
Yeah, the dive-in.
Uh, we had it at Rough Creek Park.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry?
It was at a different park, yeah.
Yeah, we could not do it on the back of the conference center because the width that the projector needed to have a rearview projection, so it wasn't wide enough to support the screen. So we moved it to the park, and it was, it was a great event. It was first time that we'd done it, and I could see that being on the back of the conference center, you know, along with other events. So right now, we're limited with the space that we have.
Okay, counsel, any more questions? Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item number nine here, which is review the feasibility study of installing the fire sprinkler system in buildings on the Granberry Town Square in Providence.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this was a, a priority from counsel, that given the lack of fire protection on the square, if a fire were to catch, that it would, it's likely to spread to the entire block and would be potentially catastrophic. And given the fact that this has survived 150 years, we, counsel felt it was important to protect it going forward. And so we took the first step, hired Jensen Hughes to do a feasibility study to take a study, to take a look at all the buildings and what it would cost and take to construct a fire sprinkler system that would cover the entire city square. And what we used, and you may have had a chance to read this in your packet, we used City of Grapevine kind of as a model for this project. And we visited them and talked with their staff and how they did this project. And we also, in your packet, is the TML detail on an award that they submitted for and were awarded, the project that they did there. So we've modeled a lot of what you have in front of you after the Grapevine template. And Grapevine actually used the same consultant we're using, and so did Plano. And Grapevine went to Plano and looked at what they did, and got their ideas. And that's kind of how we all work. And we, that's the beauty of networking that we do with other cities, is we steal ideas everywhere we can that are good ones. And so we have John Wertz with Jensen Hughes this evening. He's got the, we have the results in your packet from the feasibility study, the cost associated with that. He's not going to read the feasibility study to you, but if you have any questions regarding it, he's going to just hit the highlights. And with that, I will introduce John Wertz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? All right. I'm just going to go over the high points of this. As Michael said, we did kind of a high-level feasibility study of the downtown area. Based on my experience, I oversaw both the Plano and the City of Grapevine downtown retrofits. And the scope of what we looked at was these seven buildings shown in this diagram here. And we initially did a similar scope in Grapevine where we took in more buildings than we actually ended up putting sprinklers in. And that was based on, we found a couple of, this is an individual building, even though it's still a historic building. It's an individual building with a single tenant and a single owner. So if they're going to do sprinklers, there's no really upside to basically providing sprinklers in there because you have no exposure to the adjacent buildings. What drives this is basically these buildings are built in a way that doesn't meet current fire codes, building codes. So if you have a fire in one of the buildings, it will basically spread. And generally, takes out at least one adjacent building could take down the entire block. So again, we've now looked at the main four blocks plus three additional buildings shown there. This is a breakdown of the blocks that we looked at for that diagram, and we've estimated square footages for each area. They're just a combination of surveys, aerial images, tax records, that kind of thing. So we base this on square footage pricing. This also lists all the codes that we've used. The fire department's looked at that and agreed with the codes that we've applied. The first phase of that analysis, we did a hydrant flow test in two locations of downtown, just to make sure we had enough water supply to make the system work without any water storage tanks or booster pumps. And the water supply is adequate based on our calculations. The next thing we looked at, and this is always the really challenging thing on an existing building, is trying to figure out how to get a large water supply into an existing building. With the recent street upgrades, we don't want to mess with the new sidewalks, new streets. So we looked at basically bringing water lines into the back of each building through the alleyways. Still have to access the water mains on the street for the tap, but for the most part, we try to keep the water line, you know, in the areas that are either asphalt, or gravel, or pavers, or stuff that can be pretty easily replaced and, again, isn't brand-new. What we did in Grapevine is, for the most part, we were able to find a tenant willing to give up part of their space to put a fire sprinkler riser in. So the line would come in, you know, beneath the pier and beam foundation, and then they'd give up about nine square foot of space and put that equipment there. Looking at these buildings, they're a little more challenging because the backs of the buildings are very inconsistent in how they're constructed, the finishes. There's lots of patios and features that have been added on by the owners and tenants. So I think probably the best approach for these is to build a small addition to each of the blocks to house the equipment. That's, the two buildings that are currently sprinkled in downtown, the Opry and the Granberry Live, kind of took this approach that they built something new to house that. And then those two blocks do have fire lines currently. Now, my cost estimates assume that those spaces are not going to let us use their current underground line. I would hope that through negotiations, we would end up being able to do that, but I don't want to assume that they're going to let us do that. And this is a diagram of the equipment that would be in that fire sprinkler closet. So the water line would come in. You'd have a backflow preventer, which prevents the sprinkler water, which is always stagnant, from getting back into your drinking water, and then control valve, and then a water flow detection switch that if you have a sprinkler operate, it's going to send off a signal to alarm panel, call the fire department, tell them that the building's on fire. The challenging thing on these older buildings is you have a bunch of different construction types you have to deal with. And our pricing's broken down that way because you have basically exposed wood structure, so where they've left everything open to the structure. You have an original wood slat ceiling, and then you have, where you have basically a combustible concealed space above the ceiling, and you have an occupiable space below. And then you have some spaces that have done an additional ceiling below that. So if they've got the original wood above, and they've come in with a tin ceiling, or a sheet rock ceiling, or a lay-in ceiling. So some of the office spaces tend to have the lay-ins. If you look above that lay-in, then you have another sub-ceiling, and then you have another ceiling above that. The problem with that being is you have to put sprinklers in the combustible concealed spaces per the code. So you end up with sprinklers above the ceiling, in the interstitial space between the sub-ceiling and the original ceiling, and then additional layer of sprinklers protecting the floor. So the more ceilings you have, the more levels of sprinklers you have, and the more expensive it gets. So we've surveyed all the spaces, identified the ceiling types in each space, and what protection's going to be required. The general configuration, what we tried to do, and what we did in Grapevine and in Plano, so basically, provide one water line for each cluster of buildings. And then a common main would run all the way through the spaces, supplying the water. And then the branch lines would come off of that line. The way Grapevine and Plano approached this is basically the city took on the cost of the underground line, the infrastructure for the riser, and then that supply main. And then basically, the building owners or tenants, or whoever, only had to pay for the cost for the branch lines and the work in their space. And, because that cost is really inconsistent depending on how their space is finished out. We've got some pictures of that in here. But basically, we ended up with a cost estimate total for the entire work of basically one point, almost $1.8 million. Traditionally, and in the full report, there's a breakdown of where that goes, basically to each tenant's space, the cost of the riser, the cost of the underground, that kind of thing. There'd be a small fire alarm system for each one, which wouldn't be a full occupant notification system, but it's basically there to monitor the sprinkler system, make sure somebody doesn't turn off a valve they shouldn't. Or when, again, you have a water flow, it'll call the fire department. So that's all included in there. In the Grapevine and Plano situations, basically, it ended up being about a 60-40 split between, with 60% going to the city for the infrastructure, and then 40% to the building owners for their branch lines. I think that percentage might be a little different here, and we know that more if we went into a more detailed design. The differences between this downtown and Grapevine is you have more two-story buildings in your downtown than Grapevine does, which adds cost to the building owners. You also have a residential component to a lot of the spaces that you didn't have in Grapevine, so there are some apartments, spaces where the building owners have built out a small apartment in the back, that kind of thing. And that gets expensive to deal with versus a wide-open, like, retail space. So you're talking about a, a lot of the spaces have are just wide-open, open to the structure, and you have very few sprinklers, very few branch lines. But if you get into a retail space, the more rooms and cut-up areas you have, the more sprinklers it adds, and it adds cost. So here's kind of a couple of examples. So the top picture there is your open-to-structure, so just exposed wood beams. Picture below that is your wood slat ceiling. I think most of the space consists of one of those configurations. And then you get into your, you know, a tin ceiling. I don't think that's an original tin, so that's probably just tin attached to a jipboard or sheet rock ceiling. And then you've got sheet rock ceiling with beams. In most of the cases, even with the sheet rock ceilings, you know, I would imagine the pipe would be exposed. You could do minimal openings to get the structure because you have to support the piping. As part of a detailed design down the road, you know, we would have to probably do a structural analysis of the building and make sure they can support the weight of the pipe. So, you know, we're probably expecting a four-to-six inch supply main along the full length of the building. So six-inch water-filled pipe's pretty heavy. And then lay-in ceiling, we only have a couple of spaces there. And then the bottom picture there, that's one of the buildings that have done kind of a lean-to building on the back of their space. You know, I would imagine a riser room added would look similar to that, just smaller. But that's already been done in several locations. But all the auxiliary stairways, patios, it just makes it hard to try to bring a line into the back of those This is a picture from the Grapevine project we did. The week after we did substantial completion, one of the stores had a fire, left a candle burning, and the sprinkler system put it out. It's just more of the fire damage. It's more of the same. Again, you're going to get some water damage, but nothing that's catastrophic to the building. This is the Tolbridge space at downtown Grapevine. So you can see the exposed black sprinkler pipe running down each side. If they just leave it natural like that, it's generally black with the orange fittings. It can be painted generally, you know, depends on what the space looks for. A lot of the spaces, they went and painted it to match ceilings, and it blends in pretty well. Some places actually liked the kind of industrial look of it. That's, again, that's the main sprinkler supply running through the space, so that's the largest pipe you would expect to see. And that's an example of a sub-control valve. When we were doing our feasibility study and talking to the fire department, they expressed an interest in having a isolation valve for each individual building. So basically, what that would do is let them shut down the individual sprinklers in each space, work on them if they're doing improvements. Also, it would provide a flow switch, so you'd know exactly which building within the block was on fire. Plano did not do that, and Grapevine did not do that. Basically, it would make the piping configuration a little more elaborate and would add some cost to it. So for the purpose of this, I still modeled it after what we did in Plano and Grapevine. I would imagine that would probably add about 10% to the cost to do it that way. That's a sprinkler and a lay-in ceiling. That's a semi-recess type. Again, those are available in multiple finishes. You can get white, bronze, the chrome like that, or they even have concealed ones. What's like, what you have in this ceiling, you've got sprinklers in each of those tins that are a chrome with a plate that blends in. It would depend that. And that, the kind of thing that, why we leave some of the cost to the building owner, because they can make decisions on how they, you know, how elaborate of a sprinkler system they want, as far as like decorative. So again, do they want to paint the pipe? Do they want to conceal the sprinklers? This is a fire in the historic downtown area of Waukesha Hachey, I believe. So you see the corner, took out that entire building, basically damaged the two adjacent structures. And this is kind of the end result. You can see the end. They had a demo. I think at least three of the adjacent buildings to the next, you know, structurally sound wall, and they turned it into a small park. So what Grapevine found, they did a lot of research into this, and they found from an economic standpoint, you know, if a downtown like that loses a portion of, or one of their blocks, it drastically affects the other remaining blocks from a tourism and economic standpoint. And this is the Van Halsteen downtown. They had a similar fire with a roof collapse. Don't have a picture of the, but it took out, as you can see, it went all the way down, and basically took out the block. Oh, yeah, that's the after picture. So it took out half the block. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on the sprinkler system?
Mayor?
Captain Corbett.
Is it, so one of the reasons that this was brought up as a potential was, aside from the fact that most of these buildings have some sort of shared access in the ceiling, we have certain buildings on our square that are essentially held together from one end to the street to the other. Can you talk a little bit about that on the engineering side, what would happen to those buildings essentially if those cables were to lose their structure?
Yeah, you can kind of see it in the Van Halsteen. You would expect to have some sort of structural collapse. So if you had one of those demising walls between the two spaces fail for some reason, it would lead to a catastrophic collapse. And it's really unpredictable in these older downtown buildings, because, again, you don't even know how these were built. Some of them are just block walls. Some of them are heavy-duty brick. Some of them have heavy timber. But, yeah, my expectation and experience would be that if you had a fire above the ceiling, it would lead to a structural collapse of those two buildings, which could, again, chain reaction, take out another adjacent building, that kind of thing.
And then, it was, it was mentioned, I was able to go to Grapevine whenever we went and looked at their system. And it was mentioned there that some, probably not all, but some of the cost to the building owner or tenant, however that ended up being broken out, was able to be offset by the savings in insurance. Do you have any figures on that, or is it comparable? Is it relative? Is it minute?
It's not as much as you would think. There is a savings amount there. Now, there is some legislature going through the Texas Senate, I believe, that basically increases the tax incentives to install fire sprinklers. I don't think that's gone through yet. But my understanding is they're going to try to make it where, and this is being pushed through, through the National Fire Sprinkler Association. They're trying to basically make that where even if you've voluntarily done a sprinkler system within the last 15 years, that not only insurance, but you would get a tax break on your property. So from an insurance standpoint, in talking to some of the building owners there, I believe it's about a 25% reduction. So I believe Grapevine did an analysis of the return on investment on that. I don't have those numbers. They kind of handled that, you know, from a city standpoint on their own. And they worked with the owners and provided some city-sponsored loans to help the building owners that didn't have the money to pay for the install immediately to, you know, basically, very low-cost loans to try to make it happen. Plano and Grapevine did approach it a little bit differently. That Plano basically said, we're going to provide the infrastructure. And then they said, as a space turns over, we're going to make you install sprinklers. Whereas Grapevine basically pushed through an ordinance that said everybody's going to do it. And there, the, there was a little bit of resistance on that, but probably less than 10% of the owners were really, you know, obstinate about that. So, and once it got going, we had pretty good, kind of, I mean, a partnership with the building owners that were pretty enthusiastic. They were all happy about it when it was done. And then another difference between Plano and Grapevine is, Plano put it out for open bid. And then what Grapevine did is, we found a contractor that's in the Texas Mass program where they have a agreed-upon fixed fee for sprinkler install labor, materials, and that kind of thing. And we basically applied that to the project, and that gave us a certain amount of cost certainty. Because it's not the kind of thing... Because it's not the kind of thing you would really want to put out for open bid unless the contractor has direct experience with this type of install because they have to know going in, you're dealing with an unknown entity when you go look above a ceiling and this kind of thing. So just a couple of different ways to approach it. Next phases on something like this would be, we've already had discussions with PGAL. Challenges with this is we don't have any drawings for these buildings. So we would have to generate drawings. You wanted to do a design board and then wanted to give to contractors to do bids on. If they don't have plans for the buildings, they can't create shop drawings.
That's really the next phase, not only for this project, but for the boat, the dock program, and the police station. Detailed design would be the next phase for each of these.
Detailed design would be the, the next phase for those three projects. And the, and of course, on the dorms, it's just making the decision if, if something needs to happen there on, with the building or, or not. And then, is there one more you wanted to hear?
One more. You've got number 10 there.
That'd be Rick.
Rick, with the, with the discussion of the costs associated with the asbestos removal and the construction option in the area of the Decker Gym. Do you want to have Rick talk about that?
Yes. Rick and...
Rick and Rick.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mr. Kaufman, I promised...
Hold the mic up.
...to be Mr. Cone. Promised to be brief here, so. Okay, okay. Okay, as most of you know, the, about a year ago, the city accepted the donated property from Granbury Independent School District, property down the street. And of course, back at the council retreat, one of the mile markers in the strategic pillars was the development of city-owned property of which the donated property was one. My agenda item is basically three phases here. I'll go through these as quickly as possible. But the background information, what I have in my possession is a comprehensive asbestos survey. These buildings are old. It was alluded to earlier. One of the most popular building materials of years gone by was asbestos. And you can't have asbestos anymore. But the Decker Gym as itself, this was done back in the summer, their, their findings were the total abatement, estimated project cost off, required fees. You see those figures there in front of you, roughly $215,000. For the former cafeteria, a little bit less, $17,000. The technology building was about $87,000. And Weatherford College, which coming up to around $100,000. The Stars Building, of course, is not one of the buildings that was donated to us. In addition to that, the Decker Gym and some of the auxiliary buildings are in dire need of some remodel. I've been working with the local architect and getting some preliminary estimates on some of the upgrades that will be needed. This is also reflected in the staff report. And Terry Cone is available here tonight to answer questions on those. In addition, I also got an estimate for replanking the bleachers located at the school property, former school property football field. And that is itemized in your staff report. Those three, those three totals right there at the end of the staff report. I'd be glad to go into any detail that you would like about the asbestos survey, answer any questions that you may have. And also I have some, as I said, Terry Cone's available to answer remodel questions and engineering questions about this project. So, okay.
Thank you, Rick. I, I got one question for the whole staff here. Does, in order to, to occupy that gym right now, does that need to be done now, Chris?
Yes. We've got a roof that's leaking.
Yes.
We've got gym floors that need to be repaired from the water damage. You want to go over that, Rick?
I would. I'll go around, quickly go over that. The cost for the re-roofing, the Decker Gym complex is, is a total of $174,000. The gym is $49,000. The auxiliary building is $125. Estimate for constructing a new west exterior brick veneer wall, if you've noticed on that west side over there that was taken down, estimated $25,000. Cost estimate for remodeling existing classrooms and meeting room at Decker Gym is provided On that note right there, currently Parks and Rec is in the back of Decker Gym. There are some offices back there that weren't, that didn't need a lot of attention. So there's some of those being utilized. But this is some of the classrooms in the front part of the building that would need some remodeling.
We were talking about putting in ADA compliant restrooms for the gym.
Exactly.
There are no restrooms available for that gym use.
And that's $28,000, an estimate right there.
Do you have a total for all in?
Yeah.
For Decker? That's all in? Or is that just the abatement and the...
That's the abatement. The kind of, the estimate for construction in addition to that is $416,000.
$420 debate, $416 for construction.
And then another $121 for the bleachers.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
What's that, a million bucks?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
Can we, if we focus just on the field bleachers, didn't we, in talking to the superintendent before we took this property on, they agreed that whatever, whether games are going on in that field, they would agree to host those games at the middle schools. There's one right around the corner, Granbury Middle School, we're acting. The superintendent this week, or last week, basically confirmed that starting next season, that would be an option. Rather than I spent $121,000, I think it'd be better, better spent to maybe demolish that. If you look at the, it looks like it's self-demolishing as we speak. But demolish that and move the kids, and, and a, and a seven-year-old kid would much rather play on a, a middle school field than that field, I can assure you. Because in their mind, that's where the big kids play. But the school, the school district has agreed that that is, that is certainly a viable option and they, they would welcome that.
Okay. I will say, a lot of people may not realize this, there are some intramural...
I was bringing Aaron to talk about the activities, programming going on at those facilities currently.
Okay.
And again, we don't, if the school issues another facility.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So the, right now, the Pee-wee football does use that facility. And of course, if, if you say that the school is willing to host those, that would, that would be an option. When we have our soccer tournaments in town, they use that facility. Of course, we don't. We wouldn't need bleachers really for soccer games. And then the city uses it for a flag football. And here again, we wouldn't need those bleachers. Another option would be to demolish those large bleachers and then maybe move in a couple of sets of small bleachers like you see on our city soccer fields. Matter of fact, we've, we moved two sets of bleachers from our city pool. If you'll recall, the city pool used to be a competition pool and we had swim meets. We had no need for those large bleachers at the pool. So we moved two sets of bleachers down to the visitor's side of Decker Field. So that's another option, is get some much smaller bleachers for the smaller activities to take place there.
Were these, were these activities hosted there when the school district had the property?
Yes.
Well, I think that's what he's agreeing to.
Yeah.
Is to move those events to the schools in a partnership with the city so that we can, we can move forward with this property.
That would be great.
No objection from staff? We just wanted you to have the full picture of what we're doing at that location.
Yeah, sure. As long as the school's in agreement.
And the gym itself, what's going on there? I know there's programs.
We've tried. It, it's difficult, you know, with the floors and, and we've had to stop volleyball games because of rain, if that tells you anything, indoor volleyball games. But the gym floor is warped. So we're trying to have indoor volleyball. We used to have basketball and dodgeball, all adult activities. We've had people approach us wanting to lease the gym for youth basketball practice and people interested in starting leagues for youth since, since we've taken the facility. Of course, we, we keep telling them...
And I have another use, I'll talk to you about in the executive session about that building as well. Economic development issue.
Councilman Rodriguez, sorry. I guess, Tony, we need to just move everything to the schools, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Volleyball games, indoors...
We can certainly have that discussion. I mean, I, I will confirm the, the previous discussion. We didn't talk about the activities in the Decker Gym. But we can certainly have those discussions because they were supplying the, the, the space earlier. And, and to me, it would only make sense. Rather than I spend several million dollars on, on properties that, just to bring them up to stand, in any kind of standard at all. If, if they would be willing to partnership with, with us on those, then, yeah, I think that would kind of make sense.
I know in the past, we, you know, we have a shared use agreement with the school district and that's the gymnasium they would allow us to use, was Decker. We've been unsuccessful in the past getting access to any other gymnasiums. Trying to, you know, but...
We have a new sheriff in town.
Yeah, if we could work something out, that'd be great.
Let me, let me, let me have that discussion. I'll volunteer for that part.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any more questions for staff on this item? Okay, well, it's kind of lengthy, but you know, I think it's worth it. These are the things that we brought up on our feasibility and, and want to look at what we can do. And when you look at, I've been just jotting some numbers down here. We're looking at over $22 million here. But give or take, like the dorm at $4 million or $400,000, you know, just looking at those things. But it, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of money right there in, in a, in a few items. And a lot of them are really important to us. The fire sprinkler system, the, the police department, the, you know, the, making our, our conference center better usage and stuff like that. So there's a lot of items on there, but there's a, a big cost to it. So I would, I would recommend making a, a motion to go forward with this, with the city manager and the staff to present a financial package and present it to the council at a, at a future date in the form of a resolution with all these numbers and stuff so that we can dissect through that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilperson Reiner, I made the motion, or you got a motion or...
No, I actually have a question. Do we, do we need to make a motion first?
No, I entertain one. Somebody wants to make one.
Well, I just have a quick question.
Okay.
Can we add to that? Safety is always my first concern and I, the sprinkler system is exceedingly important. But I also want to see if there's, if you could find a way to help, further help the business owners on the square to fund that almost to zero. Grant money or whatever we can do, because I hate imposing something like this on them.
We haven't found any grant money yet, but you know, you can, you can defer that out over a 20-year period.
I understand that.
Yeah. And so their savings on their insurance would probably service that debt.
Some of it. I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases and helping them as best as we can.
And we can work on all those options and show you some formulas and stuff. But yeah, that's a, that's an issue that needs to be resolved before the work begins. And so really what we're asking is, what, what do you want me to do? I mean, this, this kind of completes a whole lot of what the strategic plan was. And it's been 12 months or 11. So we need some direction from you all to, to move forward and bring back some financing options for you.
I'll go ahead and make that motion then, Mayor.
So we have that motion and we have a second?
Second.
We got a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this?
I would just like to clarify for, for our record that it's kind of an unorthodox motion of Adam's secretary that we're doing. This, this motion's going to apply to options or to agenda items six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Right. Thank you.
I got something, Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I just, you know, when you, when you look at all, all these items, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, you know, the, the main, my main thing is, you know, what, which one do we really need? Which ones do we really want? I mean, I think the police department is the right way to do it. I think that's a, that's a need that this, the city needs. It benefits everybody. It's a win-win situation for everybody, not only for safety, security, growth of the city. If you ask me, do we, do we need a boat there, a boat dock?
Delete or add to and then be able to look at that resolution and see which parts of it that we actually want to go forward with, you know. So, and some of them be longer term. Some of them may be, you know, still on the burner, you know, and stuff. So, but you're right, we're going to be able to prioritize them. And that's exactly what needs to happen because as you see, every one of them is going to have a, a big, a big dollar amount on them. And we're not going to go out there and do them all at once. But we need to figure out what we want to do and what we can do and what is necessary going forward. Necessary real quick. I think every one of them have some merit at, at, at some point or other. But just like you said, they have to be prioritized and hopefully that's what we can do when we get a, a financial package back from the staff.
We will prepare it in a manner that you can parse through it.
I would hope you will do that, right. So any more discussion on that, council? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Fair enough. We look forward to seeing that next package. Scott, I think you waited long enough there. We're going to go on with number 10 here and that's the Consider Adopting Resolution Number...
It'd be Rick.
Oh, okay. Well, Scott, hang in there then.
I'm Mike Rick.
We're going to Consider Adopting Resolution Number 1929. I'm going to turn that over. Chris, you've got a staff report on that one?
You bet. We have our engineering team here with Improtech, Hibbs and Todd, Chris Hay and Keith Kendall. So I'll turn it over to you guys to explain the GMP number one with Pepper Lawson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Hay with EHT. I'm the project manager for the Phase One Wastewater System Improvements Project. The city has entered a contract with Pepper Lawson Water Works to serve as the construction manager at RISK for this project. An estimated contract value of $27 million. Just a reminder, this project consists of improvements to the south wastewater treatment plant, construction of a new east wastewater treatment plant, and various collection system improvements throughout the city. What you have before you tonight is Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal Number One in the amount of, or not to exceed $14,774,445. What this GMP proposal consists of is equipment for the south and the east wastewater plants, some construction of early out or critical packages for the south wastewater plant, and general conditions, bonds, insurance, and various, various other items in their contract. So with that said, this is up for your consideration tonight for approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal Number One in the amount of $14,774,445. And I'd be happy to expand on that or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Did you say Rick had something to add to this?
Well, he's the director over this project, but we've got the engineers.
Want to make sure we didn't lead him out of this. Council, you got any questions for the engineers on this, on this item?
I would just like to add that we can't get this built quick enough.
Right.
That's my issue.
So hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 19 dash 21 as presented. And I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. That wasn't so bad, was it, Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, Scott, we can wake you up now. Item number 12 is a public hearing and Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 19-81. Going to call upon Scott Sopcheck to give a staff report. Go ahead, please. Are you dead? Keep going, Scott. We can hear you.
What we have is a...
Plan Development Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a PD amendment for the Cardinal Woods addition. This property is located just south of Grace Bible Church off of FM4. We saw this particular piece of property as a zoning... We saw this particular piece of property as a zoning and a preliminary plat application in September of this year. What's being proposed is just one minor change, and that is to take the area requirements contained within the PD and modify the patio home, side setback requirements from eight inches on one side and ten feet on the other to a combined five feet on each side. So, the open space doesn't change, the number of dwelling units doesn't change, it's just something that the design engineer, Mr. Bill Baird with Baird Hampton Brown, who's in the audience, wanted to propose in order to better manage storm water, surface storm water within the development itself. Very cosmetic. We also have plot plans tied to this as well, that was presented as a part of the PD amendment. Again, the overall design, the demand on the infrastructure doesn't change, the routing geometric design of the road does not change from what council was originally presented. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on this and voted five A's, zero N's to support the PD amendment as proposed by the developer. Mayor, that's it in summary.
Thank you, Scott.
I will be happy to entertain any questions.
This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to the public, so anybody in the public wishes to speak on this item. Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff on this item at this time? Mayor, Councilman Rodriguez?
Scott, is that five feet for each building, so there's a total of ten in the, between the two buildings?
Yes. So, you have, rather than being eight inches on one and ten feet on the other to the property line, the building itself, the structure, the walls will be centered five foot on each...
So, they can put a fence, and they still have five feet from that fence to their property?
Correct.
Okay.
And they may want to talk about their courtyard here, because they have kind of a unique design, and I'll go to the building footprint.
I'm Bill Baird with Baird Hampton and Brown.
There we go.
The real, the driving reason was that with a building located eight inches off the property line, the eve overhang would cause an encroachment on the adjoining lot for every lot, and we thought that might have a problem with title insurance, so we wanted to center the building in the lot so there would be no encroachments. We will have a five-foot use easement into the other adjoining lot for patios. It's basically the same concept of patio home with a ten-foot side yard, we're just moving it five feet off the property line, so...
That was...
The look will be the same.
That was one of my concerns, is that ten-foot use easement, so how do you, what do you do in situations where both neighbors don't agree, and they don't want them on their property, I mean, and they don't want them to be on, so that that gate is on their property, and they're not going to let them in it? So, what do you do in disputes like that?
Well, part of the deed restrictions will be that on the five-foot, we will still have a blank wall on one side of the house, just like a typical patio home on the eight-inch side.
Right.
But there will be a five-foot use easement onto that lot so that your neighbor can use it as part of his outdoor living space. We were going to have the same thing anyway, you, we would, on the, if the house was on the eight-inch side, you have to have a use easement so that you can come in on your neighbor's yard and clear, clean your gutters out, or paint, or whatever, so it's exactly the same concept, just moved five feet instead of eight inches.
I'm still, I guess, can you explain it a different way? Because what if that neighbor doesn't want you over? I mean, because there could be situations where a neighbor says, "I'm going to put a lock on the gate door, he can't enter," and then the other neighbor's like, "Okay, you could put a gate lock on it, I don't want you using my green space."
There won't be a fence down the property line where it's five feet and five feet. This is just exactly like the patio home concept, where you have a wall eight inches off the property line, but there's no fence there. The fences will be cross fences as opposed to long ways down the lot.
An easement.
I might just add that this is really more in accordance with what our goal of our planning is, is to have an equal side guard on each property, and so it was a variance process that got you to where you were, with an eight-inch side yard on one side and a ten-foot on the other, so, and that was, for whatever reason, I don't know.
The zoning ordinance has it set up for an eight-inch setback on one side and ten feet side yard on the opposite side.
It gives us the ten-foot buffer that we need for fire code. That's the main issue.
Exactly.
And so, all they're trying to do is change that eight inches to five feet, so, on both sides.
Driving down the street, no one will know the difference.
Counsel, any more questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance number nineteen eighty-one as presented to, and approve the plan development.
So moved.
I have that motion, Councilman Wadley, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Scott. Next one is a public hearing, considering the following, a FIA and a final plat. I'm going to call upon Scott Sopcheck to read into this item too.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This is the final plat application with corresponding FIA to the construction amount of a little over eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the infrastructure to support the Dolce Vita addition. We saw this as a rezoning to the plan development as well as a preliminary plat, prior to that, a vacating plat for this proposed development. This is the property that was located on the old, on the Rocks site that's been since raised. It was zoned PD MF in 2019. The final plat application is commensurate with the preliminary plat that was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. There are no variances with this final plat application as such. It's ministerial in its scope, since it appears to meet the preliminary plat with the corresponding variances and the subdivision ordinance as submitted. I will make a sidebar comment. This particular note sheet has a note seven, I believe, that has that off-site easement that we talked about, about routing property, making access to the signal for controlled ingress egress on the one forty-four at Autumn Ridge. That's note number seven on this note sheet that will be filed for record at the county clerk's office. We do have that document number granting that access allowance by J.C. Pace, who's the owner of the Brookshires property. It's been sitting in the safe in the city secretary's office waiting for this moment for the final plat application. It hasn't been recorded as of yet. We didn't want to encumber the property until we can actually have the final plat application and that corresponding easement married to one another by reference. So, if council votes in the affirmative on this tonight, we'll take that easement over and have that recording information documented on the Mylar for recording purposes. So, that's it, Mayor, in a nutshell. City staff recommends execution of the FIA in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine eighty-two seventy-two, and approval of the final plat as presented by the applicant. We have the engineer, Charles DeBrel, who's the engineer record on this project, and Dr. Panna, Bernardo Panna, who's the developer with this particular project as well.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to the public, so anybody in the public wished to speak on this item at this time. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff or the engineer and owner of the properties?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Oh, Corrigan, I'm sorry.
I'll go next.
Y'all sound alike.
There was some conversation in the preliminary plat about the potential traffic impact, and that we didn't require a traffic study for this scope of project, but there was also some conversation that was had with the engineer about working with TexDOT to retime that light to make traffic flow a little better. I just didn't know if that had been done, or if that conversation had been happened.
Yeah, that topic was brought forth by Mr. DeBrel, the developer's engineer, and Mayor, if I may, just if we could get Mr. DeBrel to the podium.
And Mr. Crownover has some information on that as well. He's been talking to TexDOT. They did do a traffic impact analysis.
Right, they did.
Yes, we did do that TIA, we did get that easement from Pace at Autumn Ridge. In addition to that, I have a meeting scheduled for later this week with TexDOT to talk about a possible new right turn lane coming off of Morgan onto three seventy-seven, with two options, with acquiring property from the old Texaco property or without acquiring property on it. That's later this week.
Thank you.
Pleased to be here. I don't really, I haven't prepared anything, but I'm here and able to answer any questions.
Start out by introducing yourself, that'd be good.
Sorry, I'm Charles DeBrel. My business has changed. I'm 3D consulting, I'm an independent sole proprietor, and what we did in the traffic study is, what I thought we could do initially was make the right turn lane a through and a right. So, we looked at the analysis, and we projected forward the growth, I think it was five or ten years, and, don't get me wrong, we projected forward the growth, and what we discovered was making it a share-through and right, because you have a receiving lane across the bridge, if we do that, you have such a high right turn volume that you drop the level of service, and so the level of service goes down. And what I have done, and I will still do, is I have volunteered to come out for two, three days, whatever it takes, to calibrate the signal system once it's in place, and I will volunteer to help TexDOT or Mr. Conner or whoever's necessary to follow through on this item.
Let me correct my statement. You are right, the conversation was had after we had talked about the traffic impacts.
Mayor, Councilman Rodriguez?
Was the traffic study done with the seventy-five units in mind, or with the hundred and forty-five units in mind?
It was done with the hundred and forty-five, and we looked at the existing conditions, we looked at, as the project became built out, and we realized when it was fully built out, we just needed to compare existing to fully built out, and it's all in the report. Just trying to shorten our time here with you. I'd be happy to sit with you and explain it all.
I appreciate that. Counsel, any more, you got some more?
Sorry, Mayor, I just, TexDOT, for me, it's just, I mean, we've already experienced the issue with three seventy-seven, one forty-four is going to, is going to increase not only with the development of this hundred and forty-five units, but also with the development just across the street from First National Bank with that new development center that's going in there with a hundred and something houses, that's just going to increase the traffic there. I mean, not only one, maybe not one turn lane, but maybe two turn lanes would be a more feasible thing to do that study, is maybe having two turn lanes into three seventy-seven instead of just one turn lane into three seventy-seven. That way even reduces the amount of traffic that's backed up to Brookshires even more.
I might just add that that's what TexDOT's plan is, is to have two lanes, one to three seventy-seven from one forty-four. In the design that they're putting together right now...
Not just one?
Uh-uh. That's what they're meeting about this week with Rick, to possibly get additional...
Additional turning lanes?
Turning lanes off of that Texaco property. We've been after them for about a year and a half to buy that property, or buy part of it for the turn lane.
I would offer to share some technical terms here with you, if you just want me to get kind of nerdy with you. I'm glad to do that. So, in the study, we found that there was a heavy right turn volume, and then all the levels of service up and through the corridor, starting at the freeway where the diamond is, is like a C or a D, and forgive me if I get these wrong, they're in the report, C or D, then you have like a D, a D, and a lower D, or I think there's only three. So, what I did is I realized that the stacking length down here in front of the grocery store is why the levels of service are so low, and you have an existing synchro system to move traffic through, so the greens line up already, but the traffic progression time for one cycle is a hundred and thirty seconds. So, what I suggested we do, and what the model did, is it had all Bs and As levels of service by half cycling the cycle, the traffic signal, in front of the Brookshires. It's as simple as cutting the cycles in half. This is a sixty-five, the diamond still here is a hundred and thirty, and this cycles twice, and the whole platoon goes through, and it goes through that way. It also opens up the driveway for the critical left out to be safe, which is something we wanted to provide. It also showed that the impact from Dr. Panna was zero, so we made a recommendation to TexDOT. We gave it to you in the report. We were asked to go back and do additional analysis, and we're here asking for our plan to be approved. We are, I will gladly follow up and meet with the city. I will volunteer time to help you at any point in the future.
Thank you. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Any more questions for the staff or for engineers? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, and we've got this two-part one here. That first one being a motion to ex- excuse the said FIA as presented. So moved. I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan, and second by Councilman Mobley. Sorry, bud, you come in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The FIA is approved. The next part of this, part B, would be the approval of the final plat as presented. I've got a motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Corrigan. Wadley. I'm going to give them a bell, all of them a different bell.
It gives you the lit up panel, if you want.
Yeah, no, let's don't spend no money on lit up. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you for waiting us out tonight.
Congratulations, Dr. Conner.
Congratulations. Next item is item number fourteen. We're going to talk about these individually, I think, at the staff that we talked about them together, and we can do that also, but we will be voting on these individually on number fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. So, Scott, if you want to go ahead and talk about all three of those, I'm okay with that. Sure the council would do.
Battle through them as comprehensively and as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Item number fourteen is a specific use permit to allow for the operation of a unhosted two-guest suite bed and breakfast. The applicant is Ms. Vicki Nibbins. The architect of record is Brian Gaffin on all three projects. It's a zone single-family R eight-point-four. An SUP for a B and B is a consideration not right, but under the issuance of the SUP that is looking at all factors. Brian has offered up renderings of what the building construction improvements would look like. They know they're in the historic area, and they're in the process of getting all these architectural renderings approved through the Historic Commission. This is our use chart showing an SUP requirement. We have our supplemental standards that become automatic if an SUP is issued, like parking and permanent hardwired smoke alarms. Site plans required. You can see the site plan that they're proposing to the right of the screen. For a two-guest suite unhosted B and B, only two parking spaces are required. Public notices were mailed out to sixteen adjoining property owners. You can see the adjoining property to the north and to the east and west immediate is single-family residential. To the south along Pearl Street, all that stripped out is light commercial. We had one protest, written protest filed with the city and recorded with the city secretary's office, and it amounts to about a little under seventeen percent, that being one property owner. As a part of the deliberations on all of these, in essence, what was being discussed was the propensity of these SUPs and whether or not these B and Bs are changing the character of the residential community. There were great discussions on both sides of the argument. Ultimately, your planning and zoning commission voted five As and zero N's to support the B and B as presented by the applicant. They offered up the three conditions, that the parking shall be installed, striped, and inspected before any operation. before any operation. Those supplemental standards that are all tied to these B and Bs, uh, will be adopted as part of the ordinance. And that the SUP shall, shall automatically expire one year from the issuance of the final inspection CO. And that's due because, rather than the immediate term, that's due because these buildings are all under construction and they didn't want any kind of lapse. Uh, the latter of these three, the six oh six, is currently under construction and already had, uh, an SUP issued. And so there's no performance window to, to evaluate this on. So they reset the clock on that one as well. So all these have the same terms.
Right.
Given, which is after one year of the issuance of final inspection or a CO, whichever the building department issues. Item number fifteen, similarly, a two guest suite unhosted B and B, not occupied by a manager or an occupant. It's, uh, it's again unhosted. You can see here, the, the property is just located to the east of the previous one. There's a shot of it from Google Street View. Again, the rendering by Mr. Gaffin, um, going before the Historic Commission. Um, supplemental standards, uh, parking plan, again showing the two spaces meeting our requirements as it's unhosted, no occupancy there. Uh, again, this one had, because we had the adjoining property owners down the line, this one would apply to this one as well, uh, a little over fifteen percent. And the three conditions tied to the adoption ordinance as presented. P and Z recommended by a vote of five As, zero As to support it with the following conditions. Again, the same expiration date from the final inspection or CO. Item number sixteen, Mayor, Council, is the one that we saw roughly a little, a little under a year ago. Uh, this one has been under construction, no performance window, uh, again in the same zone. Um, this is the rendering. It's a three guest suite, uh, rather than a two guest suite. It's a three guest suite, um, hosted B and B. There will be a manager and a resident on site, uh, managing the suite. The one unique thing about this is when you look at the parking, there's only three spaces available. It doesn't have the parking to support it. So they filed, and it's in your agenda packet, a, uh, shared parking agreement with Hotel Lucy to the south on the commercial property. And so that's why you see the, the conditions, um, that are enumerated, uh, like they are, that bottom one, number six, the issuance of the SUP is automatically revoked upon termination of the shared parking agreement. All the other conditions as previously deliberated on a year ago, uh, still stand. And again, uh, they tied this one because this one had a lapse in that window of performance because it was always under construction. They haven't opened yet. Uh, they modified condition number, uh, three, stating it'll expire one year after the issuance of final inspection or CO. The prior one issued a full one-year term. Mayor, that's the three SUPs by the same applicant in a row, uh, with the conditions. Again, P and Z recommended by a vote of five As and zero As, approval of all three with conditions that are enumerated in your agenda packet.
Thank you, Scott. And this is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to all three of these items, item number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on either one of these? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns about these items to the staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So Scott, you've mentioned six oh six bridge in the shared parking agreement.
Right.
So, so walk us through, since we have a common owner to both properties, uh, of course, we're gonna agree to that. Now what happens if, if either one of those properties changes hands?
So if the property changes hands and that shared parking, i- if in the event it changes hands and that new owner comes in to the south and says, "I'll still honor that shared parking agreement," then that shared parking agreement is still intact. But if they come in and say, "No, I don't wanna give you those two or three parking spaces to support your proposal," and, and we're aware of that, then that condition as written automatically voids out that SUP and they quit operating the B and B.
And how does the city become aware of that?
We just, it's, it basically, we have to rely on, um, just being aware that there's a title transfer and then that that property owner is coming to us saying that I'm no longer honoring that shared parking agreement.
Well, the SUP doesn't transfer owner.
I think we've been down that road before.
No.
So, so if they, somebody bought it and they wanted to continue operating as a B and B, they would have to come get their own permit?
We're still relying on the honor system at that point?
Well.
Yes.
Right, right. So, and, and the SUP to the north is not tied to the owner, it's tied to the property. So if, say they, say we issue it for one year and six months down the road, that SUP is sold, or that B and B is sold, then that new owner can operate that, under that SUP.
It does transfer them.
Yeah, it's tied to the property, not the owner.
You would have to wait for that year to be up in order for them to come back and then hear the story again and then make a decision.
That's right.
With, with the agreed shared parking agreement?
Or you'd have to change the structure.
Or they could operate for six months without, without that shared agreement and just have two parking spots.
So it'd be up to staff on the, on the renewal end to confirm that the agreement's still in place?
So we would probably get wind of, of, of the renewal or by some, you know, direction of wind.
When the taxes are paid, we would see a different owner.
Yeah, okay.
We'd see a different owner and then, you know, if, if they did not want to operate the, the property to the south in the commercial zone as a B and B, which is what is predominantly being operated out, and they wanted to use that parking spaces for something else, that commercial would get a new CO and that would be probably conveyed to us, hey, this is something other than a five guest suite B and B at Hotel Lucy and those parking spaces are going away.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Council, any more questions on this item? Like I say, once again, we're gonna be voting on these individually. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion for number fourteen to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen twenty-eight and approving the said SUP with the said conditions. And I have that condition, that motion by Councilman Corrigan? Second by? Councilman Rodriguez. Any more discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving down to item number fifteen, no more discussion, council? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen eighty-three and approving the said SUP with those said conditions.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Wadley?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That too is approved. Item number sixteen, any more discussion, council?
We had discussion on the parking, I guess. Is it not possible that they can't meet the requirements for the parking?
They meet the requirements with the parking with the shared parking agreement. And our, our zoning ordinance does speak to shared parking agreements, uh, off-site as an allowance in order to sustain a business. It's just, we need to be aware that when that shared parking agreement goes away, and that's why you see that condition fashioned like it is, it's a, it automatically voids out that SUP. And that's the best protection we can.
You're talking about, yeah, we're automatically revoked the termination of the shared parking agreement. Any more discussion, council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to consider doc, to adopt the ordinance number nineteen eighty-four and approve the said SUP with the said conditions as noted. And I have that motion by Council.
Hey, I know that voice, Councilman Reiner.
Second. And a second by Councilman, person Rodriguez. Any more discussion on this, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Scott. Next one is, uh, number seventeen, is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number nineteen eighty-five. Scott, do you wanna give us a staff report on that one, please?
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, what this is, is a new location for Kathy and, Kathy Casey and Jim Leach who operate the, in LA, Granbury. They've acquired the, uh, property at two ten South Travis. Uh, this is four oh one guest suite, unhosted bed and breakfast. Uh, the parking requirements to support this at a minimum is two by our ordinance. So there's the site. Again, it's in a single family residential zone. Supplemental standards are tied to the adoption ordinance by reference. You can see the drawing showing the two parking spaces on South Lambert with the survey. Uh, notices were sent out advertising in the newspaper. As of this date, no, uh, protest, or no letters in support or, uh, protests have been received by city staff. And then your planning and zoning commission recommends approval, five As, zero As with following terms and conditions. Uh, this one has a new site. We'll start with a one-year expiration date from council approval date.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I open up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for this item? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen eighty-five and approve the said SUP with the following, with the said conditions. And I have that motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number eighteen is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number nineteen eighty-six regarding requests of the City of Granbury to amend selection sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance. And we're gonna call upon Scott, right, Chris? Scott, give us a staff report on that one.
Okay, Mayor, council, this is, uh, an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for construction job trailers in residential zone districts for public improvements constructions. Right now, our zoning ordinance doesn't allow for, in essence, job shacks in a residential zone district, uh, for the installation of public improvements. Um, so what we did is we, um, if you look under accessory and temporary uses, we have a line item that shows construction job trailers or job shacks to be permitted by right under certain conditions while there's ongoing work. It also acknowledges a certain amount of permit activity, um, that the building, chief building official can permit some structures. That was part of our contingent, actually, uh, for that type of activity, activities around concurrent while they're installing these, these public and private improvements to support the subdivision. And then, uh, when that, when that amount that has been granted under the ordinance by the chief building official has, um, been concluded, then that temporary job shack has to go before the remaining portions of the, uh, residential buildings can be permitted. So this is something that the developers want and has been admitted from our zoning ordinance to allow for this in a residential zone. It's currently allowed in a commercial zone, um, just not a residential zone. Uh, so your planning and zoning commission recommends approval by a vote of five As, zero As. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Is there, is there a limit on how many trailers or how long trailer, anything like that?
One construct, one job shack per phase.
One trailer per job.
Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, I open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for staff on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman?
Corrigan.
Corrigan, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask the, this is primarily for new development.
Yes.
Mayor, will you, I mean, so you're not talking about remodels?
This is for subdivision.
For residential subdivision.
Okay, okay. I guess that's what you're asking, right?
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
So, and, and our definition also kinda ties it up to the FIA, that the FIA has to be termed out and all the inspections have to be done. Um, and then before that, all that kinda gets cleaned up, the job shack has to go away.
Councilman Rodriguez?
So you said in one per phase, so they have four phases, they can have four trailers? On each phase or co-located?
In each phase. Because, uh, a lot of these phases, the phases are tied to an FIA and we're looking at the FIA as an individual contract. So it may be plausible that, uh, for, if I'm a developer and I get half three phases, phase one and two may go to one contractor, phase three may go to another contractor. He may wanna have, or she may wanna have a, a different job shack. So that's how we're tying it to the, the phase in the FIA contract for that construction work to support that development.
I got one more question. Go ahead. Um, what if they considered it a shed now?
A shack?
A shed after the phase. They don't wanna move it. They considered it a shed part of the building. Is that, is that, can that?
No, it's covered. It, it basically, the chief building official has a lot of discretion to not withhold permits, you know, uh.
COs.
COs, not give their surety back.
Yeah, 'cause I know we're, we're in that dilemma of, of having, uh, other materials used as exterior, as exterior materials and that this construction trailer can be now classified as a secondary building or a shed that's in a backyard now.
We've got a lot of anvils hanging over their head to kinda keep them at bay.
Yeah, I'm just thinking how I would think. Hey, hey, I'm just saying.
Permits may be, may be revoked by the building official if the use of the building or structure is contrary to the use as allowed by definition in this ordinance. We just revoke building permits and they can't finish building their houses or whatever we wanna do.
There's no habitation in this building. They can't use it as a residential quarters.
Okay.
You don't get that job shack out, trailer out of here, you don't get a CO in your house. Subdivision. We're just trying to be more, uh, builder friendly. Uh, we, we're sensitive to the fact that D.R. Horton and Sixton build a lot of houses and they're gonna need a job shack and, uh, uh, our ordinances were kinda inconsistent between the, the, the zoning didn't line up with our building standards or subdivision regs. So we're, we're cleaning all that up.
Where would these be placed?
On the, on the site where they're building the homes or the subdivision where they're putting in the streets and the water and the sewer.
They're not in the street, just on the.
It could be their streets.
Ultimately, they will not be in the street because they gotta pour concrete there. So they're gonna move them over probably to where it's a residential lot. It's set up temporary with a temporary power pole, temporary water, and have restrooms in there for their workers or whatever. And have their blueprints or whatever rolled out in there as the construction job site shack. And that could look a lot different from one contractor to the day.
Council, any more, any more discussion on it? We, we get the picture. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, adopt ordinance number nineteen eighty-six as presented.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan?
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number nineteen is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number nineteen eighty-seven regarding, uh, requests of the City of Granbury to amend another ordinance. Scott, you wanna talk about, a little bit about that one?
Absolutely, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a little housecleaning in our zoning ordinance. We currently have for multifamily applications a requirement in our base district standards. Um, when you look at section five one H, you'll see for multifamily residential districts, a site plan is required. And then we have that laundry list of what site plan elements are. However, when you look at our land use matrix under, uh, multifamily dwellings, you'll see supplemental standard one and eight. And when you look at supplemental standard one, it says site plan will be required with an SUP. Back to this, that is the base district requirement for all multifamilies in this base district, whether you're a PD or just a standard multifamily district, the site, uh, site plan is required. So we, we've always been administering to require a site plan. We wanna see what all apartments look like. Dulce ABD is a good example. We wanna see what the, what the, the, the street side appeal is. Um, so this is a little housekeeping. We're just, uh, we're modifying our supplemental standards as a proposal to mimic what the base district requirements are, that a site plan is required as a part of a multifamily development, uh, submitted to the city through P and Z and city council. So you get not only just a site plan with parking and all that good stuff, but, but elevations as well. So, it, little inconsistency between Article four and Article five, the base district standards, we've always been administering to the, to the base standards. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval by a vote of five As and zero As to clean this up.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I open up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number eight nineteen dash eighty-seven as presented by staff.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Wadley and second by Councilman Rodriguez. Any more discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 20 is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 19-88 regarding request of the City of Granbury to amend Article 7.2. I think we're gonna have Michael Ross speak on this one, Chris?
Yep, yes, Michael. Michael Scott, team.
Thank you, Mayor.
This, uh, this is a revision to our zoning ordinance to give the chief building official or his or her designee the ability to clean up unsightly signs that are non-compliant around town. Right now, we, our current zoning ordinance doesn't give us the ability to, to remove those, dilapid, we call them dilapidated, unsafe, obsolete, abandoned. And then there's another category for dangerous and signs and their supporting structures. And this will give the chief building official that ability. Upon 30-day notice, they will have the ability to take care of the sign themselves, and if they do not, the city will have the ability to act and have that sign and the structure that's non-compliant removed. Examples are like a Texaco sign or Long John Silver's, I think, is another poster child that we, we see.
Good example.
And there's others around town. So this is, this is an attempt, and basically, it's a revision of a complete section of the zoning ordinance that you can see. The first one is establishing the definitions for those terms. The second is the replacement of 7.2G and changing that to the removal of abandoned, obsolete, dilapidated, unsafe, dan, dangerous signs and supporting structures. And there's two segments to that, as you can see. And staff recommends approval and we're happy to answer any, any questions you have.
Thank you, Michael. And you're right that there's some signs that need to be cleaned up and I hope that we can clean them up immediately after this is hopefully approved. At this time, I open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close that public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions, sir? And, sir, to the staff on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Corrigan.
Corrigan.
We'll get it.
No, I won't.
So, so we're not talking about just running around town and saying, everyone that doesn't have a monument sign, you gotta tear it down and put something else up? These are only signs that are dilapidated or unsafe or whatever the case may be?
That would meet these definitions.
Right, okay.
That's correct. You're still prior non-conforming. If you're operating a business and your sign doesn't conform, you still would be a prior non-conforming sign use. But the ones that are, there's no business, the building's been leveled, like the Texaco, and there's no Long John Silver's, those are the kind that are first on our list, as the mayor said, to try to go clean up after a long time. So this...
I might just add that if there's a business that goes out of business and the sign is still there saying they're a business and they're not there, we're gonna require that property owner to blank out that sign.
Right.
And, and if it's unsafe, that we're gonna make them, give them an opportunity to fix it, and if they don't, we'll remove it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just know there's, there's a lot of non-conforming signs around town and that's the last thing that...
If they're active and they're non-conforming, we're, we're not gonna mess with them.
Excellent.
That's, that's not legal under any scenario.
Mr. Mayor?
The Wadley.
I saw in the, in the fee schedule, you're gonna have $350 to remove the sign. If it's a significant sign, it would cost a lot more than $350.
That's an admin fee.
Yes, sir.
Cost plus there.
That is a good, that is a good point.
That is one of, also a recommended change to our fee schedule is to add that 350 to cover administrative costs and then the actual cost of the removal would be on top of that.
If we only charge 350, we'd get calls to help them.
They'd just wait for us to force it out.
Counsel, any more question for staff on these items? I think that's a...
Mayor.
Good.
Mayor.
Wait, Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, you said the city building official's gonna make that determination whether it's, meets these requirements? They, the owner has a dispute of his matter of opinion, I guess. Is that something that we can address here or where does that get?
They would, the chief building official or, or their designee would give the notice and that would start the 30-day clock and they'll have, in that notice, it will tell them they have a 30-day period to appeal that decision. And if they do so, then they would be scheduled for a zoning board of adjustment hearing to go before that citizen board plead their case and the board then would ultimately make the decision.
Okay.
That's on the, the dilapidated ones. The unsafe and dangerous signs are something we just have to go take care of before someone's injured or, or falls on a car or something like that. That's why there's two segments to that, that ordinance. The ones that are just abandoned and such, that's the 30-day clock. The other ones that are dangerous to the public, we have to go take care of.
Yep, and I agree with the mayor. I think the sign like Long John Silver needs to be taken down almost immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you for agreeing with us. We've been, we've been working a long time to get to this point.
Meanwhile, metal dangling out of the air there.
Needing out the fire department to take care of that over Thanksgiving holiday.
Hey, we can knock it down.
Counsel, any more discussion on this?
I, I do have one more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez.
Is that just gonna be the sign and not the, is it gonna be the post and everything?
Everything.
Okay.
It's everything to the ground.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cut the torch.
No more comments, counsel?
Trucks are running.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 1988 as presented by the staff.
So moved.
And I have a motion by a whole bunch of people.
Corrigan.
Corrigan and a second by Mobley.
Come on, Mayor.
Any more discussion?
I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah.
Terminating.
To adopt ordinance number 1988. With the said. So we have that motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number 21, which is a public hearing considering approving a request for Red Cedar LLC for Propel. Chris Kaufman, you have a staff report on this one?
Mr. Crown over, please, sir.
Mr. Crown over.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Kaufman, this is a request from Red Cedar Propel for the approval of an onsite sewer, sewage facility for their property located on their property at the South 144, the recently annexed property, it is in the city limits. By ordinance, if a central collection system is located within 300 feet, property owner must tie onto it. In this instance, the closest sanitary sewer source is over 8,000 feet away, backup 144. So it does meet the requirements for that and there's an exhibit in your packet. I guess, I don't know if I can get to it now or not, but... The permit and the site evaluations have been signed off by a sanitarian licensed by the state of Texas and an engineer licensed by the state of Texas. All the permits and all the paperwork seems to be in order. Briefly, what this is, is a, a aerobic treatment unit, spray distribution irrigation system. They're gonna spray it on the property. This property is ex served by one existing water well. It has 150-foot radius and buffers are not in conflict with it. Of course, it's not in any flood plain and there's a shallow water table not known to be present or near irrigation spray area, so... I don't see the applicant... No, there you are, you slipped in, okay. The applicant is present here tonight to answer any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Crown over. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to comment on this item or talk about this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve allowing the customer to install an OSSF as presented.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Rodriguez and a second.
So moved.
By Councilman Corrigan. Thank you to Mr. Wadley. You're good for something up here.
Not much.
Anybody else? Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Crown over. I think you're still up though, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Our next item is a public hearing considering approving a request of Saratoga at the Granbury Homeowners Association. Mr. Crown over.
Mayor, council approved the Saratoga Phase One facility improvement agreement in July of 2018. This was all approved, the plans were approved. What this item is about is a, an irrigation water well to be used to refill a future detention pond on said property at the very southern end of it. It's gonna be a combination retention, detention pond, it will be lined. What the purpose of this well is, is to keep water in this, in this pond, so it will not have to be maintained. It will be lined as well by the HOA. So, um, city ordinance states that if water service is available from a city or another utility district is not available within 1,000 feet, a private water well or irrigation well can be drilled. This water well and this development is served by the City of Granbury Water. So the closest water service is right, right in the street adjacent to it. In addition to that, we have a, two public water wells roughly 1,000 feet away that would be drawing down from the same recharge level as this irrigation well would. I have a report from the developer's driller. In addition, I have the well report for the James Road well, which is also adjacent. They would be about the same depth, about 450 feet. I might say that this, one more time that this FIA was approved, these plans were approved. But at the same time, I, I do not believe that this is a, a good use of this source, this precious resource. It's apparently for aesthetics only, so staff is recommending denial of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Crown over.
I might just add that our code requires this item to be brought before you because there was a request and unilaterally, Rick doesn't have the authority to approve the plans for that well, even though they were submitted on the last page in the corner, so to speak.
Yes.
And wasn't well identified. Our, our, our civil engineer did not catch it.
Nor did I.
And our administrative team did not catch it. But whenever they wanted to drill it, we caught it and, and that's when it percolated to this level. I said, well, we don't have the ability unilaterally to allow that to be permitted, so we're gonna take it to council and let them vote on it as required by our ordinance. And so that's where we're at. That's...
Thank you.
The applicant's engineer is present tonight, Mayor, so...
Okay.
Be happy to answer any more questions you have.
Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, go ahead and open it up to the public right now and then I'll get right back to you. So at this time, it is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? See, we've got one person going towards the mic.
He's been here for a long time.
I know he did.
That's right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Joe LaCroix with Barrettham from the Brown, we're the civil engineers on the project. Rick did a great job kinda recapping the water well. It, the proposed detention pond will have a retention component, meaning it's gonna hold water. Developer asked that it be installed there as amenity to the community. With that, it'll have an aeration fountain in it as well. Really, we think it's gonna add, you know, value to the community and surrounding residents. With that, the water well was included in the original construction plans. Purpose being is that this pond will fill up with rainwater, but in times when it's not there, there is a PVC liner that, that's being installed. It was included in the FIA as well to the tune of $88,000, I think. Contractors already purchased that, they're ready to install it. The idea is to be able to keep water, you know, on top of that PVC liner to keep it from being damaged from UV rays and from the, you know, basically drying out the pond. As far as the, the plans go, it was identified on the construction plans, it was actually line item in the FIA that was approved by city council, both the recharge well and the liner for the pond. It was approved, you know, plans were approved through numerous review sets by Public Works, by the city engineer, by DRC staff at that point. As far as I'm aware, the groundwater conservation district has approved it as well pending city approval and we meet the spacing requirements required by the conservation district as well for that. This is not a large producing well. Like I said, it's not gonna be turned on all the time. We're looking at under 17 gallons per minute. I think the city well is producing 70, okay? So it's potentially a smaller well for that. And it'll just be a manual on and off switch. So we've designed the water standing level in the retention pond to be five feet deep. If it goes below three, it really starts to run into problems with that liner. HOA president or assigning will go out there, flip on the switch until it fills back up or until it rains, and then they flip that switch off. So it's not, not on all the time. I don't think we're gonna be really competing with the city wells. And again, I'm just asking you to approve it based on your, your previous approval of the FIA, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What's the, what's the difference in the, the amount of money that it would cost to go ahead and utilize the city water versus what you're planning on doing here?
Kind of the back-of-the-napkin calculations, we've got about, to fill it up all the way, initially, we're looking at 1.3 million gallons or so. And if that's metered through irrigation, it's just, it's not really staying, I don't know what your water rates are, but, and also, I don't know about you, you know, when I leave the house, I turn the AC off, I don't want it running.
Right.
Similar to, if you've got this pond that runs down, HOA may not wanna have to pay for that water immediately, you start to run into long-term, you know, if it's on irrigation well, they're not gonna go out there and flip that switch, or excuse me, if it's on irrigation meter, they may not flip that switch to where it is if you're just paying for electricity and to pump that well.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this on pause right now and see if there's anybody else in the public wants to speak on this item right now? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time, but I'm gonna open up to the, the council now, so hang on there, they may have some questions for you. Counsel, you got any questions for the engineer there? I think you had, had one, didn't you, Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Wadley?
Well, my question a minute ago was, if there's two other wells that are fairly close by, I guess what, what you were saying, Rick, and they're drawn from the same place, are we getting in a problem or we're gonna affect those wells? And what are those two wells used for?
Yes, that is my concern. And those are very, they were drilled five years ago and they're basically new and are high-producing wells. It's good water. And one of them is right across the road, less than 1,000 feet, and the other one's about 200 yards down the road towards James Road, so, yeah, this is all in the same area. And the depths that I've seen for the developer's well and the well that we have in service now are about 500, 400 to 500 feet deep, so they're at the same level of the water table.
Is there, is there a proposal to line that well to prevent water from getting into it like we would seal it off from municipal well?
That question probably has to be directed towards the, the well driller itself. I don't have those plans, but I'm, I'm sure it would comply with whatever requirements are for the TCQ and within the city for their water well. And if I may, I think the separation distance...
Move up to the mic if you would please, so we can get you on record.
Yes, sir. If I may, I think it's 500 feet, give or take, between our proposed 17-gallon-per-minute well and then the city's, you know, 70-gallon-per-minute well. And again, we'd only be drawing down when we need to recharge the pond, not, not continuously.
The conal depression would, would, would affect us there. So we would have impact, a negative impact from your conal depression from your well against our water wells is the concern.
Potentially, yes.
Yeah.
However, we've got the separation distance required by the, the conservation district for this new well from existing wells, so given those, you know, criteria, we're, we're almost double, I think the separation distance is 300 feet and we're at 500 feet, and those, those are in place to mitigate the, the conal depression influence.
Well, a thought I had is like, this year in July and August, we didn't have rain for six or seven weeks and I could see it being used quite a bit during that timeframe. You know, if you're trying to maintain a level. And then another thing I was thinking of a minute ago, is there gonna be a high-level switch cutoff so you don't just flip a switch on and walk away and forget it's on and overflow the pond?
We could talk to...
I did that at my pool once and it, it cost me some money. You know, ran all night and it was full.
The pond wanna overfill, there's a detention discharge area there, so it won't overflow. We can certainly talk to, you know, putting a timer on it of some sort to only run for a certain duration. And again, we could incorporate, the well driller could incorporate some sort of... And again, we could incorporate, the well driller could incorporate some sort of a timer into that switch.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So I'll go back to the mayor's original question is, surely you've done some figures to, like a cost analysis. Is it worth digging the well versus pumping city water in there? You've done some kind of evaluation of what it would take, not just the initial fill, but to keep it. Because you, you said yourself, the aesthetic value of a pond is a lot better than just a bunch of weeds growing in a field. So there's some inherent value to the property owners to have it as a pond as opposed to just looking at bare liner and watching a bunch of weeds grow through it.
And have to mow it. Correct. To be honest with you, we, we looked at this at the very beginning of design. This, this well has been on the plan since we first submitted it to the city. Though, you know, it was kind of a, a conversation between the design team and the developer that they'd rather propose the well to, to fill this liner back up. And we've moved forward with the design. So all the storm drains coming in are, are designed to have a standing water level in there as well and so on and so forth. So I don't have those, those calculations.
Well, and I'm disappointed that staff did not catch this, and I'm disappointed in, in the council that we didn't catch it as well. Because I know we lean heavily on the, on the staff for this vetting process. But looking at it from, from where we are right now, like I said, if there's been no cost, is, I mean, is it gonna even be worth your money to dig that well? And I know what, what you're thinking is, hey, you can basically fill it for, for free going forward, and I appreciate that. We have to look at it, the welfare of the other two wells and what effect it's gonna have on that. And I haven't really heard a good, a good response, other than, other than Rick saying it will have an effect. But we have to look out for those wells going forward as well.
That's understandable. Again, you know, we've got the separation distance required by the conservation district, which takes into account those, those kind of effects, and just the, the seventeen gallons per minute compared to the seventy gallons per minute. Just the factor of difference there between those two.
Well, and, and getting back to the HOA and the aesthetic value, I know in bentwater, they have several ponds there that, that they're not pumping, to the best of my knowledge, they're not pumping out of wells, but they very well could be, but it's all aqua Texas, aqua Texas out there. But I think every neighborhood has to, has to say, what is this worth? Should it be a park? Should it be a pond? Should it be all of those things? But from the city side, again, we have to look at the, the overall picture, not just what's behind the walls in that neighborhood. So, thank you. That's all I've got.
Yes, sir. I got one more thing. And this is from a design perspective, and I'm assuming this has been taken into account, but if it's a retention pond and you're keeping water in it, is it still a retention pond? Or is it just gonna be some water and there's still enough volume in there for the retention? It, it acts as both a retention and a detention pond. Retention meaning it's gonna retain water indefinitely as, as a water feature with a fountain in it. Detention, it also serves as that, meaning that it, it fills up above that standing water level and detains the water and then releases it from the development at pre-development flow rates. So that, that'd be the difference between the retention.
So detention's what I meant then, okay?
Yes, sir. It, it acts as both.
Is it my, is it my understanding that this is also gonna be used for some irrigation? Are they gonna, you gonna water the surrounding grass that's around this pond?
No, sir. The only thing we're hooking this up to is it'll have a two inch pipe or one and a half inch pipe coming out of the well, stuck into the side of the pond to then fill it up.
No irrigation.
No, sir.
You got a question, Mr. Kaufman?
That was my question.
Oh, was?
Mayor, what do we use the other wells for?
Public water supply.
We, and we just dug them five years ago.
Yes.
How often do we use them?
They're, they're, they're active wells.
Every day, twenty-four seven.
Every day, every day. Every day.
If you live in Meander, that's where your water's coming from. For the most part.
Counsel, any more discussion? More questions for these people?
Mayor, is it, this might be more of a question for staff or for Jeremy, but I know the rules have recently changed. Is there any, is there a way to table this and get some sort of evaluation on what the potential issue could be on our wells? And would that in turn affect the development going forward and their timelines?
We always had that option.
We, we're not saying that we don't, the, the problem is, is that we have to take care of the city and the neighbors in that area. And that, I think that for me is more precedent than having a pretty water view. I hope you understand that side and that aspect, and, and I understand your contractor spent all this money, but there, you know, staff's already admitted that they made the mistake, all right?
Yes, sir.
They've already, they've, they've already admitted that. We're just trying to figure out what the best solution is.
I understand.
Can the well be drilled to a different depth that would not affect the city's water supply?
Potentially. I've, I've tried to get some of that information from the, the well driller. He said that there's, we don't have a, a hard study on it yet because he hasn't bought anything. There is the, the Glen Rose Aquifer within, there's other wells within approximately maybe a half mile of here that are drilled down to three hundred and eighty feet. With groundwater, you really can't tell. It's, it's on the other side of a ridge line. However, that is a potential that we could drill down three hundred and eighty feet versus the city's five eighty, but I'm not aware that there's actually water at that location at three eighty, so.
Well, my thought was that, you know, the, I guess purity of the water doesn't really matter for the retention pond part aspect.
No, sir, it doesn't.
So if it was a shower well with not as good a water, what difference would it make? And if it didn't affect the city water at all, could it be a different aquifer, then that would probably be real beneficial.
We could potentially do that if we could verify the water depth there. Yes, sir.
I think Councilman Corgan had a suggestion to table this, and if we was to do this, what would be the timeline you'd need us to come back to?
Well, certainly, we could, we could do a, a conal depression study, run that by the, the water conservation district and kind of see the influence of both of those. Again, we just went by their, their standards of separation for well distances. But we can certainly dig into that and we can get it back to the city, you know, within a couple of weeks for sure.
Okay. And check the depth perhaps?
We should have well logs that we could share with you that might help.
So I think that those are publicly available, and the well drillers looked into those, and like I said, there's not any wells within this immediate vicinity at the three eighty depth, but there are some within a half mile or so. And again, groundwater, you really can't tell until you're, until you're down there.
So January seventh, first meeting would be enough time?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Corgan, you wanna make a motion on that?
I will make a motion that we table this agenda item until the January seventh. Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table this to a, a, a future date, and we have a second by Councilman Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Look forward to getting some more information on this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Our next item is a public hearing considered proving a request of the city of Granberry to voluntary annex thirty-nine point eight acres. And here again, counsel, as we discussed this, there'll be two votes on this. You'll have to vote on to consider granting the said petition and also voting on considering adopting, I'm sorry. Yeah, and we'll also vote on the, the annexation. Scott?
Thank you, mayor, council. Mr. Manager. What we have is a request of Reunion Court LP, which was the previous owner who transferred it to the city of Granberry. This is the site of the new sewer treatment plant, the property that we saw previously. And this property was annexed in two thousand fourteen with a previous owner who entered into a development agreement with the city of Granberry to stave off the annexation for a period up to ten years or until such time and event causing a voluntary annexation trigger took place, one of those being a title transfer. We have the warranty deed transferring the title from Reunion Court LP to the city of Granberry. That's the trigger. So we are bringing this property into the city of Granberry. It's considered as a voluntary petition by agreement. So that's what's being considered tonight is, and this is a two-part vote, as mentioned, by the mayor. We need to consider granting the petition of voluntary annexation and considering adopting the ordinance nineteen eighty-nine providing for the voluntary annexation of said property. Be happy to entertain any questions, mayor. The adoption ordinance has our standard language regarding service plan requirements, acknowledging the rural nature of the property, and when this develop, develops, then all the
Right.
development requirements adopted by the city will be vetted against any kind of development application.
But it, and it still requires the two votes, the one, the one vote for considering the grant, granting the petition and then the one for the ordinance, right?
Yes, mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott on this item?
Or Chris.
Or Chris. Thought maybe you'd sleep over.
I just have my question answered.
Staff, how's that? Hearing none, at this time I'll entertain a motion to consider granting, or to grant the said petition as presented.
So moved.
Have that motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more quest, discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next part of this is to consider adopting the ordinance number nineteen eighty-seven as, as presented by the staff. Counsel, do you have any discussion on that? I'll get it right in a second time. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to adopt ordinance number nineteen eighty-nine.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Rodriguez. Any more discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next item on the agenda, and I think we've already got this, but is a public hearing considered approving a request of Mr. Fred Wood for a voluntary annexation.
Mayor.
And it is no ordinance needed, right?
No ordinance needed. We actually adopted ordinance nineteen twenty-three on April second, twenty nineteen, bringing this property already into the city. Shad did this while I was out of pocket. The first meeting, when he reviewed this development's application on April second, when the resoning brought, brought the property into the city then, so. No action required.
No action required on that one. Thank you. That makes it well, seems all very good. Thank you, Scott. So counsel, at this time, I'll now declare that Granberry City Council is convened into open session. That all members are present. The city council will go into the closed session pursuant to the provision of Texas Government Code and accordance with the authority contained in this following section, section five five one oh seven one. Consultation with the attorney, section five five one oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development, and section five five one oh seven four, personnel matters, our city attorney's contract renewal. We will now go into executive session. Thank you, folks, for bearing with us. We are reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. Counsel, do you have any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to make a, a, a motion that we give our city attorney a three percent raise based on this year's salary, beginning January one of twenty twenty, and a three, and, and follow that with the following year, three percent raise for the two-year contract with a six-month opt-out period going forward.
Do we have a motion for a raise with a opt-out period for the city attorney? Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. Was it you?
Yeah.
I have a second by Councilman Wadley. Counsel, do you have any more discussion on this motion at this time? Hearing none, record vote. Councilman Corgan, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yea.
Councilman Wadley?
Aye.
Yea.
Poor Tricia's on the end down there.
I'll take it. Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
And I am an aye. That passes with one. Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing none, the council meeting is adjourned.